Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. If you'd be kind enough to take your seats. The November seventeenth, two thousand and ten meeting of the city council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being presented live on KCLV cable channel two and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the city's website at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV, channel two, and the web, the Wednesday of the meeting at eight P M., and also on Friday at four A M., Saturday at seven P M., Sunday at seven A M., and the following Monday at one P M. This building is protected by a state of the art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system, so we make an announcement just out of caution that should alarms activate, please leave through the exits and our marshals will tell you when it's safe to re-enter. There's no reason to believe that that would ever take place, but we have to advise people of the potential. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Mr. Bernardino Batista, Hispanic community, and please remain standing for the pledge. He's not here? All right, then if Councilman Ross would be kind enough to give us her invocation.
I will, Your Honor. Thank you. Our heavenly Father, we humbly bow our heads at this time to give thanks for the opportunity to serve this city. We're grateful, Father, for the blessings that Thou has poured upon us. We ask that Thy Spirit be with us this day, that You will guide our thoughts and our decisions. We ask a blessing upon the people of this city, that You will watch over and protect them. We ask a special blessing upon the children of this city, Father, that You will be with them, guide them, and protect them. Also, Father, we hold in our hearts and our minds continuous remembrance of those who serve this country in the armed forces and ask that Thy Spirit would bless them, keep them from harm, and protect their families while they are away. We say these things in Thy name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning once again, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to all of the youngsters here today. We're gonna have a good time. This is the ceremonial portion of our agenda, and for our first ceremonial item, we'll honor the November Employee of the Month, and I'd like to ask Larry Hausnus, Director of Field Operations, to join us at the podium. And I'm proud to announce that the November Employee of the Month is Michael Dunn. Michael? Congratulations. Michael is a welder with the City Streets Division and has been with the city since the year two thousand, and he's done something very cool that goes beyond and above what is expected to do as a welder, and the result is we were able to beautify our roadways at a fraction of what it would normally cost. Michael usually makes routine welding repairs, as well as custom fabrication work for use in the city's storm drain and sewer infrastructure. After noting the recent metal artwork that the Nevada Department of Transportation has installed along area highways, Michael was asked if he could create metal structures to beautify the city of Las Vegas medians. With little more than this general suggestion, he went to work with rebar and sheet metal and has created structures in the form of desert vegetation, including prickly pear cactus, agave, and other plants. These metal structures give the city a way to make medians more attractive without adding irrigation and water medias, which are very costly. They also allow the city to be more sustainable in terms of not using water for vegetation in these medians. So I want to applaud you. I didn't know you were the guy who did it. I thought it was as cool as it gets, I really do. You know, they prepare this stuff for me, and I don't read it ahead of time. I am really impressed. I love those. So on behalf of the entire city council, I'd like to congratulate Michael in being named the November Employee of the Month, and along with the plaque, Michael has received a hundred dollar Visa card, compliments of the Nevada Federal Credit Union. You haven't expended that yet, have you? Who do you like this weekend? Huh? We could partner. Uh-oh, his wife's getting it. Okay, but congratulations, Larry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to, first off, thank the mayor and the members of the council and the city manager staff for supporting this program. It's a great way to honor some of our great employees, and Michael certainly is one of those. This is a real interesting project that he undertook, and it solved a longstanding issue in that neighborhood, and it's really worked out well. It's just a fine example of our great employees that we have working for the city.
I'd just like to thank Jerry Walker for nominating me for this and supporting us with all the stuff we do. Thanks again.
Thank you. I think it's terrific, I really do. Thank you. Thank you, Larry. For our next item, Councilman Ross has got to recognize Native American Heritage Month. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. As our community grows, and we have more opportunities to acknowledge the accomplishments of our residents, especially our young people, it's important to remember that Las Vegas does have a rich cultural history. Native Americans were the first residents of our valley with history and traditions dating back thousands of years. Councilman Barlow and myself are fortunate to have within our ward boundaries a sovereign nation, the Paiute tribe, which has contributed greatly to the development of southern Nevada. More than thirty thousand American Indians representing over two hundred individual tribes and groups add to the richness and diversity of the city of Las Vegas. November is Native American Month and is dedicated to recognizing the intertribal cultures and the achievements of the original peoples of this land. The city is pleased to promote awareness of this history and culture of our Native Americans. I would like to thank the Red Hand Dance Troop for performing this morning in the plaza, and I didn't get down here quick enough to watch them because they do an incredible job. The Red Hand Dance Troop is sponsored by the Las Vegas Indian Center and talented members the Paiute, Shoshone, Arapaho, Chipaway, Navajo, Sioux, Ojibwe, and Nute Nation. The Red Hand Dancers show traditional dancing, music, storytelling, and insight into Native American culture. At this time, I would like to ask the Paiute Tribe Chairwoman Lucy Campa to join me, as well as Councilmember Deborah Faria. Come on up here and join me. Give them a round of applause for their contributions. The chairwoman is the top dog when it comes to the Paiutes, and we owe you a great deal of respect and certainly appreciate you being here. So the mayor and the city council members are presenting you with this proclamation in recognition of Native American Month, and we would like to thank all of those who work hard to promote and preserve this most important heritage, especially for generations to come. This is for you, Lucy. Thank you both very much. Give us a few words, tell us what's going on in the Indian community.
On behalf of the Las Vegas Paiute Tribe and on behalf of all of the Native Americans who live in Las Vegas, I want to thank you, Mayor Goodman, and the city council for your recognition this morning. The Las Vegas Southern Paiutes are the original Native people of southern Nevada. We share a common boundaries with the city of Las Vegas, which makes it essential that our governments work together on social and economic development issues. Our downtown reservation located just a few blocks here from here is fifteen acres with a complete healthcare clinic that provides health services for all Indians who live in Las Vegas. Our tribal headquarters and police station, the smoke shop and general store, and residences for some of our members. In addition, we have a four thousand acre reservation in the northwest with our resort, golf courses, and residence, surrounded on three sides by the city of Las Vegas. So we have a lot in common, and we must work together like our ancestors. We must prepare and take care of the generations that will follow. As the tribal chair, that is my sworn duty, and I look forward to working with the city of Las Vegas as we move forward in the future. Thank you again, on behalf of the Las Vegas Paiute Tribe. It has been my pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Now for our next item, we'd like to invite Director Joe Marcella from Information Technologies, and Anthony Willis, and Richard Wells to join us at the podium, because today is Geographic Information Systems Day. Gentlemen, come on up, please. As you know, technology is not something I regularly involve myself with, since I am a dinosaur and really completely illiterate, but I did learn how to use an iPad. I did. I have forgotten what I learned, however, so I'm back, you know, asking my staff to get me the information, but it really is amazing what GIS does. We use GIS every day at the city to interpret and understand data, as well as reach out to the citizens to inform them of projects in every part of our city. Every year, these gentlemen take the technology to our schools and teach the students about GIS and how it can be used to improve the quality of life in the cities. So Joe, I want to thank you and your staff for taking the time to work with our schoolchildren, and I want to present you with a proclamation today declaring November fifteenth as GIS Day in the city of Las Vegas, and ask all of our citizens to acknowledge and thank you for the good work that you do. Congratulations.
Wonderful, and Anthony has something to say?
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Anthony's the one who taught me how to use the iPad. I forgot everything he taught me, Anthony. We need another refresher course. Okay, I don't know how to turn it on. No, all the soccer players are laughing. Shame on you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As the mayor said, this is part of National Geography Awareness Week, I'm sorry. National Geographic supports that every year, and they use it to promote geographic literacy in schools. Several city JS staffers are out today at both Hyde Park Middle School and Desert Plains High School, spending the day with geography students and teaching them about the tools and geography as a discipline. So we thank you, and this recognizes their effort and the effort of our JS community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Anthony, and thank you, Council. And Mayor? GIS is basically grounded in almost everything we do, and I think if you look at it, most of the business of the city is based on DIRTT. DIRTT has a number that's called a parcel, and GIS is a way we represent all of our applications. So from parks to fire, it's all grounded in that application. So I thank the council and the mayor, and the men and women who managed this particular application for us. So thank you.
Okay, for our next item, I'd like to have Patricia Harris and David Dedera from our Cultural Affairs Office to come up and join us at the podium. The city was recently honored by First Lady Michelle Obama for our New Directions Youth Arts Program as one of fifteen civic programs nationwide that engages youth in the arts and humanities. New Directions was founded in nineteen ninety-seven as an after-school program that teaches life skills to at-risk youth through the creative arts. Over the last thirteen years, the program has engaged more than forty-four hundred and fifty young people in this creative movement. The best news is that this award also brings a ten thousand dollar grant that will allow the city to continue to offer opportunities to at-risk youngsters. And I understand that Patricia was able to travel to Washington, D.C. with one of the students involved in the program to personally accept the award from the first lady. So that's great. Patricia, tell us about that experience, please.
It was really wonderful. This year was the first year in many years that the White House has acknowledged the youth programs during Arts and Humanities Month, which is in October. And it was really important that the fifteen organizations that were there and the one international award winner have a whole process of learning about what's available across the nation, support both in marketing and through grants and foundation support. So it was a wonderful experience. They had us in in August to also have us meet some of the national funders and then back in for the award. It was wonderful.
That's terrific, and this is the award, actually?
It is.
Very nice award. Will this hang in your office?
Yes, unless you'd like to have it in your office.
No, I would like to have it in my office, but I think you are really entitled to it, so it's all yours.
We're very proud of it. This is, I want to just mention David Dedera here to my right. David is one of our instructors and has been an instructor for many years with us. He also works with Cirque du Soleil and the Cirque du Monde at-risk youth group, and he's just been a fundamental foundation to us and to our program.
Okay, we'd like to see him. Okay, thank you very much. Congratulations, David. Terrific, thank you. Congratulations, Patricia. Now for our final item, Councilman Anthony is going to recognize some great young athletes who competed in the annual Mayor's Cup Soccer Tournament. I will say this, I'm a member of Las Vegas Events, and at our meeting last, I think Thursday afternoon, there was an application for us to provide money in order to expand the breadth of the Mayor's Soccer Cup Tournament and to allow funds to be designated so that folks from Las Vegas can go and promote the soccer tournament throughout the world. And the Las Vegas Events approved that allocation, and that's a good thing, because even though we have tons of people come from outside of our country and play soccer against our own youth, we'll even have more in the future. So keep up the good work, and I turn it over to Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. That's absolutely great news. It's my honor this morning to recognize a group of outstanding student athletes who represent thirteen local teams who won their division in the City Las Vegas Mayor's Cup. The weekend of October twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-four, the City Las Vegas and the Downtown Soccer Club hosted the Las Vegas Mayor's Cup. One, probably our most important partner in this is the Downtown Soccer Club, and I'd like to ask Roger Tabor to come down here as a director and just kind of stand up here with me while we do this. So Roger, thank you very much. Approximately three hundred teams participated in this event over three days, and teams from eleven states and three countries played in the Mayor's Cup. It's now in its eleventh year, and it was given the top ranking by GotSoccer.com in the United States. We're additionally excited that the Mayor's Cup for older youth will again take place over President's Day weekend, with the German national team having already committed, along with twenty teams from Canada and Mexico, and we're waiting for the first-time entrance from Guatemala, Poland, and possibly France. And I want to give you a kind of an idea of what this tournament is all about by giving you some statistics to show how big this thing is. There are five hundred youth soccer teams that participate, seventy-five hundred participants. There's thirty soccer fields used in the city of Las Vegas. There's eight hundred volunteer shifts, three hundred referee shifts, twenty-eight USA states are represented, fifty foreign teams, one hundred college coach recruiters come out here. So we have college recruiters coming out here watching these players that are going to be future college soccer teams. And we have ten thousand rooms that are rented that evening, so it's a great economic diversification for our particular city. We also have some great partners that help us put this thing together, Telemundo, Adidas, Las Vegas Rotary Club, Las Vegas Fremont Rotary Club, the honorary councils from Germany, France, and Romania, and the Colorado Rapids, which are a major league soccer team. The finals were played at one of the best soccer facilities in the United States, and that's the Betty Wilson Soccer Complex located at Lake Mead and Tenaya, located in beautiful Ward Four, which is my ward, and I'm proud to have that soccer team there. And I have to recognize three individuals that spent a lot of time putting this tournament together and spend a lot of time making sure these are first-class soccer facilities. And if you could stand up, please, Larry Hognus, Lonnie Zimmerman, and Sherri Alexander, who's the tournament director. If you could all please stand and be recognized. At this time, I'd like to recognize the teams and the players. When I call your name, I'd like the team to stand up. You're going to be on television. You're going to get to watch yourself on television, so make sure you're looking good. And then I'd like to have the coach come down. I have a certificate of appreciation signed by the mayor and the entire city council for all of you to take home with you. So then, when we're done with that, I'm going to turn it over to Roger, who's going to give us kind of the last word on this. So the first team, and these again, these are the local winners of their divisions. They played some tough soccer teams, and they came out number one. The first division is the Boys Under Ten Telemundo, and the winner of that is the Las Vegas Sports Academy Red, and I'd like to have Coach Eric Garris come down here. So if the team could stand, and if the coach come down here, didn't make it? Okay, they're in school. All right, they're practicing. All right, well, we'll recognize them. They came out number one. The Boys Under Thirteen Adidas Division, that was Vegas Silver, and the coaches Rodolfo Rojo. Is he here? Why don't you come down here, coach? Come on down. And is a team here? All right, very good. There's part of the team. You guys just stay right there. You guys stay right there and look good on television. Coach, why don't you come down here, and we have some certificates for you. Where are those certificates? Oh, thank you, sir. Very good. Thank you, Coach. Appreciate it. Good job. Okay, the Boys Under Fourteen Telemundo Division, the Las Vegas Premier Ninety-seven White, Coach Jason DiOrio. Is the coach here? Did the team make it?
He's not.
Okay, come on down here. What's your name?
Mike Harden.
Mike Harden, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
This gentleman's going to represent quite a few of the premier teams, so why don't you hang out here for a minute. The Boys Under Fourteen Adidas Division, the New Sport Ninety-seven Gold, Coach Brian Lavoy. Is that team here? Okay. The Boys Under Fifteen Telemundo Division, Vegas United Lineman, Coach Ruben Duran. Is he here? The team here? Why don't you stand up, team? Good job. Come on down here, coach. All right, you've got the whole team here. The Vegas United Limone Team. The Girls Under Ten Telemundo Division, Las Vegas Premier White, Robert Watlin is the coach. The coach here, the team here? Okay, oh, and you're taking those. All right, very good. Thank you. All right, the Girls Under Ten Adidas, New Sport Zero Two R.F., Coach Ryan Fitzsimmons. Coach here? The team's here, all right. Great job. Come on down here, coach. Great job, girls. You look awesome. Congratulations, Coach. The Girls Under Eleven Division, eleven versus eleven, the Las Vegas Surf SB, Coach Said Banabian. Coach or the team here? Okay, congratulations. The Girls Under Telemundo, the Downtown Rapid Ninety-Nine White, Coach Daniel Stone. They here? Stand up, team. Okay, the Girls Under Twelve Adidas, the Las Vegas Premier Ninety-Night, Coach Doug Borgel, and you're accepting those. Thank you. Good job. The Girls Under Twelve Rotary, the Las Vegas Premier Ninety-Nine Red, Coach Carlos Lopez, and you're accepting those. Good job. The Girls Under Thirteen Rotary, the Las Vegas Premier Ninety-Eight Red, Coach Jeremy Gill. Nice job. You get a lot of certificates there. And last is Girls Under Fourteen Telemundo, the Las Vegas Premier Ninety-seven, Coach And do we have another team? Okay, the Premier Ninety-nine White is here. Is the coach Carlos Lopez? Is the coach here? Okay, but the team is here? Stand up, girls. And before I turn it over to Roger, I'd like the, are there any parents here? Why don't the parents stand up, because without you, these kids would not be successful. So why don't you all stand up and take a nice, Your Honor, applause. Roger, would you say the last word?
I certainly will. I certainly will. Thank you very much, Councilman Anthony. Couple things I just mentioned that our partners have already acknowledged, so I think I'll go with that, but this has really, I think, become a great, great community event, and it's because of all these partnerships, and it starts with, obviously, it starts with the mayor and the council, and then it goes all the way, extends to just the wonderful facilities. I will note that this is the first time in over fifty years we had rained the entire week preceding the tournament, and the fields were immaculate, and that credit goes to Larry Hognus and his staff. So thank you, and we appreciate all the hard work you do. I also, the mayor earlier asked who you like on Sunday. We like the Colorado Rapids in the MLS Cup, and they're playing in the finalists. And that's right, you do have a jersey with your name in the number zero, number oh. And also, thanks again for your support in the Las Vegas event, so we'll make this continue to grow. We formed Downtown Las Vegas Soccer Club six years ago in a unique manner, so it's organized as a charity, which is different than the other organizations in town, and we're charged with blending cultures, we're charged with teaching kids how to play and giving them opportunity, and we're very proud of that. I know we've got some representative, Danny Stone, who is a coach of the team, is also the club's technical director, so I want to acknowledge that, and also acknowledge Sherri Alexander, the city's employee who is the tournament director, who really makes it go, and I don't know if you want to come up here, Sherri, but thank you very much. Anyway, thank you all. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Any items from the morning session that the council, staff, and/or the applicant wished to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward at this time and acted upon at this time. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have item number seventy-two as a hearing on complaints seeking disciplinary action against Ren Oriental Therapies LLC doing business at Shangri-La Health Clinic, four-thirty East Sahara Avenue. The city attorney's office requests that to be held in abeyance until on December the first, two thousand and ten meeting. Are there any other items?
Mayor Pro Tem, I'm going to ask that we trail items fifty-eight and fifty-nine to this afternoon at one o'clock. Thank you.
Okay, we'll be, I'll make a motion to do trail items fifty-eight, fifty-nine, and to take the appropriate action on the
Item number 60 is discussion on possible action on the six-month review of the financial forecast model, and this pertains to all wards. Mr. Vincent.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. For the record, Mark Vincent, your chief financial officer. As you know, we've been doing an update every six months of our financial situation, particularly focusing on the revenue forecast. And we just met last Friday with our outside committee, and I'd just like to give some credit to the folks that helped us with that. On the committee, we were blessed to have Kevin Ork with Howard Hughes, Mike Nolan, and his CFO, Joe Woody from Dale Cortez, Jeremy Aguero and Mike Alastui from Applied Analysis, and Senator David Park, who has some budget and financial background. Senator, what did I say? Sorry, it's Senator. I wrote Senator. Excuse me, David. So Senator David Parks and Guy Hobbs, who was not able to make it this Friday, but has been there at all the other meetings. So that's the group that we use that help us out in reviewing our financial situation. And I have a few slides. It won't take very long this morning, but I have a few slides to kind of walk through what's happening with the national economy, and then what we see is happening in local economy, and then how we are estimating that would translate to our budgets. On the national side, I've been using consistently for the last three presentations some data from the Financial Forecast Center. They've been around for about 15 years. They focus on economic and financial forecasts. They use what they call artificial intelligence. They claim to be objective. I use them here because it's easy to use them. I will tell you that when you go from quantitative to qualitative financial analysis, I think you have to have a blend. And I think when you're focusing on artificial intelligence, you remove the emotion effect of what happens in the economy. And so the forecasts I take with a grain of salt, but I do find them helpful for us. The first slide I have from the Financial Forecast Center is the real gross domestic product growth. You can see that in the month of September, GDP dropped down to a little over 2%. The center here is forecasting, and if you can, I should probably explain this a little bit, this is percent of change. And there's a red dashed line in the middle of the chart. That is zero. Anything below that is negative growth, anything above is positive growth. And then there's a little gray faint gray line just past September of 2010. That would be for the end of September, October. To the left of that is actual data, to the right of that is forecast data. And so for the next three quarters, they're forecasting that GDP would drop a little bit, but still will stay positive growth of about 1.5%. So we view that as a good sign that the economy nationally is still expanding. National unemployment rate is still hovering around 9.5. They're expecting that to grow a little bit towards the early part of the next calendar year. And of course, from our perspective, Las Vegas perspective, our unemployment is still rising up to 15% in the Clark County area. But nationally, we see that the unemployment has sort of flattened out after that's huge unprecedented growth in unemployment in September 2008. U.S. job growth has been positive, as of late, a little bit under zero. This is, I think, in thousands of jobs. They're predicting that in sometime in the late first quarter of 2011 that we might see a dip below. But again, I would caution that we take some of those forecasts with a grain of salt.
Mr. Vincent, are those new jobs?
Yes, these are job, actual jobs.
That have been created during that period of time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that did not exist before?
Well, I don't know that I would say they did not exist before. Could be creation of a new job that was previously let go and then recreated.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent, the U.S. job growth rate, I see where we have a little bit of an uptick in this last quarter. However, it falls very sharp during the, it appears to be possibly the, I'm assuming the first quarter of '11. Is that an accurate statement? And if so, what's causing, what is going to cause the sharp downturn in the U.S. job growth?
I will, let me answer in two pieces. The sharp tick up in April of 2010, I don't know what triggered that. Obviously, it seemed to be a little bit of an anomaly. Could have been related to federal activity. The problem with this particular center that I'm using, they provide no narrative. They just provide graphs. So it's up to us to sort of interpret them. I can tell you that up until just past August of 2010, those are actual numbers. The forecast to the right of that gray vertical line is a forecast. I suspect what I'm seeing in the forecast here is they're thinking they're going to see some seasonal growth in, you know, through the holiday season, and then the normal fall off from that growth after the end of the holiday season. I think that's what they're predicting there. Although you don't necessarily see that pattern playing out in the chart to the left of that historically. So again, they're using analytical data to forecast something that doesn't always work on a quantitative basis. There's always some emotional aspects of this. Retail sales growth has been strong nationally. You can see it's been bouncing as high as over 10%. It's been hovering around around 5. The center here is forecasting that that's going to tail off. Again, I'm not sure I necessarily agree with that, but that's their quantitative forecast. New housing starts, these are also in hundreds, in thousands, I should say, and again, forecasting that to be rather flat growth nationally. These next set of slides are going to be difficult to read. They are from the UNLV Center for Business and Economic Research. You've seen these before. There are, on this particular slide here, this is, there are index of leading economic indicators. And there's two lines. The green line, which as of, towards the right of the chart, is separating and dropping, that's the Southern Nevada leading index. And the purple line is the U.S. index. And just to give you a flavor for what's in here, things such as building permits, both residential and commercial, passenger counts, gaming visitors, gaming revenue, convention attendances, these are some of the things that we put in the Southern Nevada leading economic indicator. And you can see that when the national indicators started to recover back in, about a year ago, we felt, and we're in fact still in, sort of a local recession and still are. You can see them sort of flattening out a little bit, but it's not clear to me whether those leading economic indicators are actually flattening out. They seem to be a little erratic, but it seems to be hovering right above that 125 index. So again, nationally, we saw earlier recovery, and that's a good thing. We haven't quite felt that here locally. Although there were some signs in August, and we saw some favorable information from the gamers and the Las Vegas Convention Visitors, where they show that there are some positive things to look at. There've been a lot of articles in the paper recently that signs of optimism. So we'll see. With respect to the Clark County Tourism Index, again, SEVER is Center for Business and Economic Research. These two are the Tourism Index and then the Seasonally Adjusted Tourism Index. They pretty much track together. But what you'll see in the far right, the August numbers have had, seen a sort of a sharp tick up. And that's kind of what we're hearing locally in the gaming side. In fact, I had a note that, well, this is tourism on the gaming index, I'll have a different comment. No, I'll make that comment now, because I don't have the gaming index. I believe that August was the first month since December 2007 that the gaming revenues grew without the Baccarat play. Because we've seen some spikes in the Baccarat play driving some of the gaming. But if you take Baccarat play out of the index, out of the gaming revenues total, this is the first real growth we've seen in non-Baccarat gaming for almost three years. So that's, I think, some are seeing that as a positive sign. With respect to business activity, and this is looking at three components, it's looking at gross gaming revenue, employment numbers, and taxable sale numbers. And here again, you can see while it seems to be leveling off a little bit, maybe trending down a little bit, although we've had some good sales tax numbers reported to us here the fourth quarter of last year and the early, first two months of this, first quarter of this fiscal year, the employment numbers, of course, are horrible still for us, and I think that's what's dragging a lot of this down. Again, I've said this before, typically in a recession and to recovery period, because of lots of reasons, but I think part of it's psychological reason, employment is always the trailing indicator. It's not until businesses start to feel good about the recovery that they believe it's going to be, going to take hold, that they'll go back to hiring back folks that they may have laid off. It's always a trailing indicator, and we're seeing that here locally as well. Construction index for Clark County, this is, of course, is the one that's most painful. It's just trailing, still continues to trail down. One of the facts about this is that I believe from the peak of 2006, June of 2006, the construction employment is down 42% from the peak of 2006.
What the figures on the left indicate? From 0 to 280?
That's just an index. What they're looking at, I didn't write down exactly what they were looking at in this index, but it's a composite index. They're looking at certain factors. They may be looking at building permits, they may be looking at valuation, they may be looking at jobs. They're probably looking at multiple factors to make, to create this composite construction index. And I apologize, I didn't write that down for you. So that kind of gives you a picture of the national scene and the local scene. It's still mixed locally. I think there's still an uncomfortableness about the unemployment rate. We are seeing some positive signs with sales tax, some early signs perhaps on the gaming side, although I don't know if that will be sustained or not.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, if you will.
Yes, Councilman.
Going back to the previous slide, Mr. Vincent, the Clark County Construction Index, with the downturn in the construction activity, do you have a slide within your presentation that will also be reflective of the population to actually see if in fact the population is sliding just as well?
At this point, we're seeing the population, the data that we have is saying that population growth is flat. There is no growth. As you've seen in the paper, there's some prediction that perhaps we might have, see negative growth into the future. But at this point, through this period of time, we're looking at flat population.
Flat population. Thank you.
I don't remember if I said it on the outset of this, but this presentation actually is, I think, should be, I don't know if I go so far as to say it's good news, but certainly it's very encouraging news. For the first time in the four meetings that we've had with our financial group, when we met with them, they were uncharacteristically quiet or demure. There wasn't any heated discussion. In fact, with the data that we presented to them, they really didn't offer any changes. They felt that we were pretty much on track. And I took that, it was an observation I made, and I walked away from that thinking, well, things aren't as volatile as they used to be. We're generally in agreement about what we see happening. This is a picture of our general fund revenue history. The green bars are in dollars. They represent our general fund revenue. They go with the scale on the left side of the page, which should be in dollars. So we're slightly under, our revenue for FY10 is right around $460 million. The yellow or goldenrod bars to the right is our FY11 budget. Actually, it's not the budget, it's the forecast, and then FY12 forecast. And then there's the, the red line represents the growth change over the prior year, and it goes with the percentage scale on the right. This will be the same format for the next three or four slides, so why don't you get used to this. And then there's a little dashed light blue line, that represents zero change, and it applies to the red line. So you can see that our general fund revenues in fiscal year nine and 10 had some significant reductions, negative growth. In fiscal year 11, it's a slight positive growth, but what's driving that was the budget decision we made last May to transfer in about $14.5 million from revenues, excuse me, funding from other sources that we identified when we applied the new fund balance policy for our internal service funds and our, some of our enterprise funds. So we were able to identify some additional resources, and by transferring them in in fiscal year 11, that's why you're seeing a little positive uptick. If you took the $14.5 million out, we'd be right at about 4% negative growth for fiscal year 11 as well.
Mr. Vincent, as you, before you move forward, that, the red graph will basically show in fiscal year 11 that we will be fairly flat.
Yes.
And then the fiscal year, or the forecast for fiscal year 12 shows that we're back down again. Explain that also prior to moving forward.
In fiscal year 11, we transferred in, as a result of your budget direction, $14.5 million. If you took that $14.5 million out of this revenue stream, you would be right at about 4% negative growth in fiscal year 11. So you'd be really looking at four years in a row of negative general fund revenue growth. So the decision to transfer in some money in fiscal year 11 from other sources as a result of applying the new fund balance policy that you approved last May is what allowed us to do that. But right now, we're just looking on the revenue side. And I do have a slide at the end here that show the expenditure side, because that's where really the, I mean, there's encouraging news on the revenue side, and you see that here shortly, but there's, I think there's some things that you have authorized and allowed us to do, and that we've done with our collective bargaining. And you have an item today on the POA to approve with those changes. We've done a significant...
To help minimize the...
On the expenditure side. And you'll see that here in a second, which is really, I know where you really want to go, but I have to walk you through this so you understand what we see is happening with the economy. If I break up the general fund into pieces, here's C-Tax. C-Tax is the consolidated tax. It's about 84% of that sales and use tax. A big chunk of it is government service tax, which is the motor vehicle privilege tax. The other significant piece of it is the real property transfer tax for real estate transactions, and there's some other very small pieces for some other cigarette and liquor taxes. But it's predominantly sales tax. And the good news here is we finished fiscal year 10 with some upswings. We originally had forecast that we would be down 11.5% in fiscal year 10. We're now looking that that will be closer to an 8% negative. That's because of the strong fourth quarter we had last fiscal year. We've also had a strong couple of months. And talking with the financial group, we felt that we might see as much as a percent positive growth from 10 to 11, and we might see a growth from 11 to 12 that will approximate, say, inflation or the Consumer Price Index. So what we're seeing here generally is we're kind of thinking that fiscal year 10, from a sales tax or a C-Tax standpoint, was probably the bottom of the trough. But what you see here is a pretty steep drop, falling on the left side, and a rather slow climb back up on the right side. So again, we expect the recovery in the sales and use tax area to be slow and steady. Nothing like what we saw in the past. But again, knowing that, or believing that we sort of hit the bottom with...
To help minimize the...
On the expenditure side. And you'll see that here in a second, which is really, I know where you, where you really want to go. But I have to walk you through this so you understand what we see is happening with the, with the economy. If I break up the, the general fund in the pieces, here's C-tax. And C-tax is consolidated tax. It's about 84% of that sales and use tax. A big chunk of it is government service tax, which is the motor vehicle privilege tax. The other significant piece of it is the real property transfer tax for, for real estate transactions. And there's some other, very small pieces for some other cigarette and liquor taxes. But it's predominantly sales tax. And the good news here is, we finished fiscal year 10 with some upswings. We originally had forecast that we would be down 11.5% in fiscal year 10. We're now looking that that will be closer to an 8% negative. That's because of the strong fourth quarter we had last fiscal year. We've also had a strong couple of months. And talking with the, the financial group, we felt that we might see as much as a percent positive growth from 10 to 11. And we might see a growth from 11 to 12 that will approximate, say, inflation or the Consumer Price Index. So, what we're seeing here generally is, we're kind of thinking that fiscal year 10, from a sales tax or a C-tax standpoint, was probably the, the bottom of the trough. But what you see here is a pretty steep drop, falling on the left side, and a rather slow climb back up on the right side. So, again, we, we expect the recovery in the sales and use tax area to be slow and steady. Nothing like what we saw in the past. But again, knowing that, or believing that we've sort of hit the bottom with sales taxes, is a good feeling to know that we're not still dropping. Property tax is a whole nother story. You can see the steep decline we saw from nine to 10. And then fiscal year 11, which is, as a, which we believe are good numbers. They're based upon what has already gone out in tax bills. So, we've taken consideration, some amount of, of delinquency activity, but we believe that's a good number. Fiscal year 12, what's driving fiscal year 12's drop is, in our analysis with our fiscal oversight folks, particularly those that have a lot of experience in the real estate area, we're still very concerned about commercial valuation, and we're concerned that that might drop. If it were to drop from its peak at the same ratio that residential dropped, and by the way, most of the residential drop really had to do with land values, not so much the improvement value. If it were to drop by the same amount, we're still looking at maybe another 35% drop in valuation on the commercial side. And so, we're, we factor that into this. And when you do that, we're looking at another 14% drop in, in, in property tax revenues for fiscal year 12. We're kind of thinking that 12 might be the troughier for us. We're hoping that that's the case. But this is, this is the driver for our reduction in revenues for fiscal year, if their forecasts are fiscal year 12. We look at licensing and franchise tax. What's happening in fiscal year 11, and the reason why there's positive growth in, in 11, is because of the decision we made again last May to eliminate the video enterprise fund, move those revenues and the expenditures for KCOV Channel 2 into the general fund. That was a positive gain to the general fund after expenditures of about a million, a little over a million dollars. And so, on the revenue side, there's a $2.6 million jump from fiscal year 10 to fiscal year 11 as a result of the additional revenues. Under the old Cox franchise agreement, we had to provide two percentage points of the 5% franchise tax had to go to the KCOV Channel 2. And the legislation from 2009 eliminated our franchise agreement with Cox. The franchise agreement now is with the state. That allowed us to take that revenue and move it back into the general fund, which, as I said, was a positive gain for us for about a million dollars. So, that's why you're seeing a jump there. This starts to squish together the revenue impacts with our operating expense impacts. These numbers on this chart are in millions. The top part of the chart is the revenues, which is the piece that we had just gone over, I've just gone over with you. The bottom part is our...
Excuse me, Mr. Vincent?
Yes, sir.
Where do these figures come from?
These are, these are finances estimates.
Your department's estimate?
Right. The revenue, the revenue numbers have, for the lack of a better term, received a good seal of approval from the Financial Review Committee, because we were using their expertise to help us with the revenue side. The bottom numbers are our estimate of what we think actuals will look like. So, it's not necessarily a budget. I wouldn't call it a budget. Wouldn't call either, any of these numbers a budget. But it's our current best guess as to what we think actual numbers are going to look like for 11 and 12. And let me call your attention a couple of things. One, you see the positive increase from consolidated tax from 11 to 12. That's a good thing. But it's not offset, it's more than offset by the drop in property tax. You can see the, the $14 million drop in property tax from 102.8 to 88.4, as I previously talked about. And you can see that the transfer in there, that $14.5 million, we don't have that to transfer in in fiscal year 12. And so, those two negatives more than offset the slight positive in consolidated tax. When you go down to the, to the expenditure side, the biggest thing you see there is, from 2010 to 2011, our current budget year, we eliminated about $11 million in wage and benefit costs. That was primarily through elimination of positions, whether they be filled or vacant, whether it be through a reduction in force or through a vacancy elimination. When you go from 11 to 12, you'll see there's another roughly $19 million in reductions in wages and benefits. Almost all of that is driven based upon concessions, be they wage or benefit concessions for all categories of employees, including the executives and appointees. So, that's, if you look from, I mean, that number of 2010 is probably about $20 million less than what it was at the peak. So, if you think about, about this as a significant reduction in our labor and benefits, a lot of it being driven by elimination of positions. But a good chunk of it also being driven by the bargaining concessions that we've, that we've recently achieved. So, that's a good thing.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes, Councilman.
Mr. Vincent, well, it's not only our, our bargaining units. It's also our non-represented employees that have agreed to not take certain raises or increases as well. I want to make sure we recognize that when we talk about a reduction in wages and benefits, it's as a result of the efforts and the goodwill, if you will, from all city employees. Secondly, when we look at the reduction on that wages and benefit line item, from 257 in fiscal 10 to 246 in the current fiscal year, to 227 in fiscal 12, the 227 is a projection, correct?
Yes.
If you were to go out to fiscal 13, 14, and 15, would that figure continue to drop?
I have, no. My assumption's current with me, and again, I'm, getting out to 13, 14, and 15, I mean, we, we have contracts to renegotiate, so it's hard to predict. And I, and I hesitate again. I know some will, whatever I say here will be cast in stone someplace and be used against me in the future time.
Guaranteed, Mr. Vincent.
But, am I on tape? But I am, that was a rhetorical question, Beverly. But I am forecasting some modest growth. Nothing like we have seen in the past. So, I mean, let me answer the question that way. I'm assuming that starting in fiscal year 13 and, and forward, there's some, some modest growth. But again, nothing like we had seen historically. So, the issue that you've always brought up, Councilwoman, about the important to deal with the future new employee is, is something that I'm trying to take credit for in this forecast.
No, I, I want you and this council to take credit for it. And certainly, when we get to the next agenda, item 61, we're going to talk about that a little bit more.
Right.
Can I just add a quick note?
Yes, Ms. Redwell.
The, the way I interpret that, as your city manager, is that there may be the potential for restoration, to some degree, of the programs that we have severely curtailed in 2013, if what Mark's saying holds. Remember that a key piece of this puzzle is the CEA agreement that we approved a few weeks ago that curtails the number of hours that our employees work. And there are going to be areas where skeleton crews may not be sufficient as the private sector reignites. And so, what we will want to do is very carefully evaluate that. And that's what Mark and I have talked about. Where can we begin to do our restoration so that we get our service levels back up where they need to be to support the community? So, I, I want that to be really clear, that, that's, you know, what we're hoping will happen. And if these numbers don't play out the way we're projecting them, obviously, the options for restoration will be limited at that point.
That's a great statement. Obviously, the growth can be either growth in wages or growth in bodies. So, I didn't try to evaluate whether that was growth in wages or bodies. It's just a growth rate. The, the other thing I wanted to point out at the bottom of this chart, a couple, just one other thing before I get to the bottom. On LVMPD is Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. We make two contributions towards Metro. One is the operations contribution for the budget that's approved by the, by the Fiscal Affairs Committee. There's also a series of interlocal agreements that we have with the county that deal with how we have funded certain facilities. The 1.2 million, for example, sitting there for fiscal year 10, for that is the interlocal agreements relative to some bond issues that the county's made, for which we pay our share, our 38%, if you will, of that, of that bond issue. It's sort of off, off of the fiscal affairs budget, if you will. You see a significant increase in, there's a little increase from 10 to 11, and a significant one from 11 to 12. That recognizes the new Metroplex lease for which we have an interlocal agreement that we will be responsible for 38% of that lease as well. So, that's what's driving that change. It's a, it's a minor change, but it would probably catch your eye. What I really want to drop your eye down to is the excess shortfall line. Those numbers that are in red with parentheses around them means that they are negative. In other words, there's more expenditures than there are revenues. For fiscal year 10, we're looking at a slightly less than $18 million. For fiscal year 11, we're looking at about $7 million negative. That's, that would have been closer to 21 had we not transferred in the 14 million, transfer in from above. But then, when you go to 12, we're looking at about a $13 million shortfall. And while, as, you know, your chief financial officer, I don't like to have operational deficits, the reality is that when you go to the line below that, which is ultimately the fund balance line, it appears to be healthy enough to absorb those shortfalls moving forward, such that even when you get to fiscal year 12, that 55.5 million in projected fund balance is still about 12% of the 456, that, 456 million in... But I'm comp... Obviously, I'd like to see the deficit go away. But to do that, we would have to probably have some additional programmatic reductions. What I'm saying to you is, from my perspective, we could, this is getting in the range of something that's workable and manageable for us. And, and that's encouraging news. So, that's really the message I'm bringing to you today. We will start the budget process as, as, as it is, because there's not a whole lot to deal with moving forward. But we'll start the budget process again in December and be moving forward. The big issue for us is going to be, as we go through March and April, getting the final tax numbers from, from the treasurer for the net of the appeals process and the application of the, of the tax bill limitations, to see where we really are going to be at finally for the property tax projections. That's going to be the, the one that we're most anxious about. Plus, we'll have four or five more months of C-tax, sales tax information to factor into that. So, at this point, I think it's encouraging. Let me just close with this one slide. And it might be used against me. The mayor, I'm sure, will hit me over the head with it at some point.
Well, I wish you would project, Mr. Vincent. You put us all asleep up here. You're whispering that during this entire presentation.
Thank you for...
Project on this last, project.
Thank you for waking me up.
Thank you.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes.
Mark, while you digest the mayor's request, the, I, I need to just go back just one more slide, two more slides, if you will.
Another one?
Yeah, to the fiscal forecast.
This one?
I don't have the overhead on my screen. Okay, there we go. Thank you, David. The, the shortfall, going back to the shortfall, just so I'm clear, the 17 million in fiscal year 10. We injected the 14.5 million for fiscal year 10.
That's correct.
I mean, 11, I'm sorry. 11, which basically leaves us at a $6.6 million deficit. And we, and you mentioned that we don't have the transfer in amount for fiscal year 12, which basically is why we're back at a $12.7 million deficit. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Okay. Wanted to make sure it follows you there, so...
And the reason why the deficit would be growing is because from 11 to 12, excluding the transfer in, revenues are still projected to drop slightly. That's why.
And, and the, and the transfer amount of 14 million came from the reserves?
It came from non-general fund, funds, principally our internal service funds. I believe there was also, there may have been a little bit in the capital project fund. But there was, in May, at our budget hearing, we went through an exercise of identifying these funding sources. And in that process, we determined that we needed to have a specific policy for the internal service fund so that we don't get to the situation where we have funds that are sitting out there and not being applied properly. So...
Are there no funds remaining for us to utilize in fiscal year 12?
This, this all contemplates that we would still have the $50 million in our fiscal stabilization fund that is covered under NRS 354, that chapter, with respect to how that money can be used.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, this, this slide, at, at the risk of being accused a, a bad projector, the reality is, a year and a half ago, we sat here, we thought we had a five-year deficit of $200 million. And we were trying to decide how are we going to deal with that. We created a, a fiscal stabilization fund to protect against that. But we also started taking action in fiscal year 2008. Between, between May and November, we still were seeing the economy falling pretty substantially. And we upped that five-year short, shortfall deficit to 265 million last May. We thought it was still 270. As we stand here today, we're, we're projecting that five-year shortfall to be less than $70 million. So, the reason for that, part of it, yes, part of it's the economy bottoming out, but, but a lot of it is just the action that you've taken and, and the management of the city has taken to mitigate our expenditures and manage through that process as best we can without having more reductions in force perhaps than we, we've already felt. So, this is why I'm saying that I think we're getting in the realm of this, some of this is manageable. It's not a great picture. It's certainly not a growth picture. It's not a picture that we're going to be adding lots of positions back anytime soon. But it's, it's starting to feel like we're stabilizing a little bit, and maybe we can get through this.
Thank you.
Unless you have any further questions outside?
Are there any other questions of Mr. Vincent? Well, thank you very much for the report. I think...
There was no action required on this.
No, I understand.
I want, I want to make a motion for that real short report.
I have a quick question, please.
All right. Please identify.
Todd Farland, 240 North 19th Street. On the fund balance, is there a point on that fund balance where we may jeopardize our bond rating, our AAA bond rating? In other words, it's going down every year. So, I mean, is there a line there someplace where they're going to...
Your honor, there, there is a theoretical line. We're not anywhere close to it. The fact that we had the fiscal stabilization fund on top of what I consider to be, at this point, a healthy fund balance, I don't see any risk of, to our bond ratings at all. But this stays the way it is.
Thank you for the report. All right, we'll go into item number 61. This is a public hearing and possible action regarding a memorandum of understanding between the Las Vegas Peace Officers Association and the City of Las Vegas regarding the current labor agreement for fiscal years 12 to 13, with an impact of $3,658,000 on the general fund. This is a public hearing, which I'm now declaring open. Ms. Redwell or Mr. Tarwood, or the two of you?
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm very pleased to stand before you today to present the fourth in a series of agreements with our collective bargaining groups to round out all four renegotiated, open contract negotiations or concession agreements with every one of our represented groups. I think it's a phenomenal day for the City of Las Vegas that we've been able to reach an accord with all four of our bargaining units. Today, we're here to talk about the LVPOA, which is the representatives of our corrections officers. We have over 200 employees in this work unit. And I, I would just like to extend a thank you to those employees, the POA leadership, the negotiating team, Dan Morgan, Vince, Chief Coin, and Deputy Chief Freeman, for finally working this out. We've been trying to work on this for many, many months. And, and we finally were able to reach an agreement that we felt achieved what the council had asked us to go back and try and work out with all of the bargaining units. They're all in the same ballpark. I didn't sense very much excitement during Mr. Vincent's presentation.
Well, because he was droning. He was...
Well...
He was swallowing his words.
He, he was definitely not energetic this morning.
No.
And I don't, I don't want to imply that we should be excited about still having a deficit situation. So, please don't get me wrong. But I think the efforts that we've undertaken in the last 18 months in partnership with our labor leaders showed today in that fiscal forecast. And it showed true leadership, true teamwork, and a willingness to get this city to survive and back on track to thriving. And we should all be very proud of that today. Our work's not done. There's no bones about that. We've still got things to do. But my gosh, we're looking at a five-year forecast of $66 million structure... But my gosh, we're looking at a five-year forecast of $66 million structural deficit instead of one that's 270. And at one point, we were talking about it being much higher than that. And I think that's a testament to what hard work we can do, working together, from your leadership through every single employee in this organization, and I, I appreciate it. And I, I think that it shows what we're made of and what we're willing to do for this community, keep our services strong, and, and get things back on track so that we can be the best that we can be for our community. I'm going to let Dan go through some of the details, but I just did want to make a couple of quick points, kind of to share with you some of the things that Tracy Valenzuela and her board and I have talked about, just so you're aware of them. And we're going to continue to work on other issues that help us take advantage of and make the most of this agreement that's before you for consideration today. And, and what I mean by that is that they're basically, in this agreement, is a brand-new wage and benefit structure that we need to try and employ quickly in the City of Las Vegas, to basically create a much more stable environment for our employees and, and for the city as the employer. So, it's my commitment that I'll continue to work with Tracy on that and her board to try and roll out some ways that we may be able to take great advantage of that quickly. Also, in looking at the administrative impact of this agreement, should it go forward today with your approval? The negotiated reductions in salary and benefit make us highly competitive with the private sector. More than competitive, I think. Which means that we can save another $100,000 over and above the numbers Dan's getting ready to present to you by not having to do a further study of the administrative functions of the jail to see how competitive we are with the private sector. That helps us avoid that cost, not too dissimilar to the kind of discussion we had with, in our fire negotiations. And, you know, we give our employees quite a bit of security in this agreement for if things get worse and we do have to go through an outsourcing process. But nonetheless, I, I wanted to put that on the record, and I, and I do want to say that I'm very proud of this agreement. None of these agreements have been easy to reach, and a lot of people have given up a lot to stabilize the city. This agreement is no different. So, what I would like to do is tell you that I, I'm recommending this for approval today. I'd like to ask Dan to go over the specifics of the agreement, and I know the president, Tracy Valenzuela, is here, and some of her board members are here this morning, and I'm sure they'd be willing to come up and answer any questions and may also have some comment regarding the agreement. So, with that, Mayor, I'd like to ask Dan to go over the details.
All right, before you start, Mr. Tarwood, you know, this all began with sort of a mandate, for lack of a better word, by the city council to try to get as close to flat, which means no COLA, no longevity, no steps, plus 8% of a combination of salary and/or benefits. And we've been given percentages as to how close the various collective bargaining entities have come to satisfying that. On this particular agreement here, what percentage of what we were asking for have we gotten?
I think that's in Dan's presentation there.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
All right.
We've, we've kept the same presentation for every bargaining unit, and, and the final slide will show you how far from the target we are this year, next year, et cetera. So, maybe if he goes through the presentation, we can kind of cover all that, and if there-
That's great.
-concluding questions, we can try and respond.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Dan Tarwood with the Human Resources Department. I also wanted to thank Tracy Valenzuela personally for all the hard work and her board coming together for us to be able to have this proposal in front of you today. The first slide that we have today shows you the concession offer of basically the compensation piece. The offer we have before you is a flat, which is no COLA, longevity, or step increases for fiscal year 12 and 13. That's about a $1.1 million savings each one of those years. The second item is reduction in uniform allowance down to zero, which is about a $335,000 reduction each one of those fiscal years. And then finally, a 1.5% rollback in wages for those fiscal years. And all three of those components, 1 through 3, equal about $1.8 million. And to your question, Mayor, the package, that plus 3% without any of the new employees at all. And we have also had discussions with the POA leadership and our city manager's office about a possible VSP voluntary separation program in the near future. And if that occurs, we've identified $620,000 as a savings goal. That would bring us up to about 80% of really the goal all that way.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Moving to the second slide. As you can see, these new employee considerations are, are huge. There are items in here that we certainly have formatted and will model going forward with hopefully all of our city to get to that new or future employee that is still a very good wage and a very good benefit. The first item here that we've agreed on is a 10% reduction in the hiring step one on the pay grades for new employees. After that year, they would go up to the, the pay grade and then move laterally over through the steps in a progression. Reduction in the scale, which is a nine-step pay schedule, takes steps eight and nine completely off, so it reduces it by two full steps. The third item is reduction in the steps to 3.5%. From one step to the other today, it's 5.5%, so that's a large reduction in itself. And the next item is probably the one that really sets kind of a new standard, and it's one that we've talked about in all of our negotiations and moving forward as a model. This is a reduction in, in a wage scale to try to achieve the PERS concession that was offered to us, which we've called a 50-50 split. Well, the city years ago entered into PERS program as an employer-paid benefit. We pay that benefit. And for a, a, a union such as the POA to come to us and say, for new employees, we'd like to have that split right down the middle to day one, the only way to do that is to take what our current participation percentage is, which is 37%, cut that in half at 18.5% and lower the wage, whole wage range by that amount. That's the way to achieve it. That is a huge benefit, and that's one that we would look at as a model moving forward. Longevity, eliminate that completely for new hires going forward, and for new hires on sickly payout, reduce it at 25% from its current. And the last item really should be stricken. We, we negotiated that out of the contract. It is not in the, in the MOU, and I just want to make that as a corrections item. The third slide is kind of a summary, and what we tried to do this time is put it up the best we could, because we have one union, the LVCEA, that in fiscal years were actually in calendar years, and the other unions were in fiscal years, so it's kind of spread all over. But as you can see, specifically the third column there with the LVPOA, the annual goal was about $3.1 million for fiscal year 11. It would be zero fiscal year 12, $1.8 million, and then fiscal year 13, $1.8. Again, we had not calculated any new employee or new hire savings in that. We did a pro forma out of finance using 10 corrections officers under the new format, and first year was about a $300,000 savings, and marching it through about five in series was about a $3 million savings. So, it has a financial impact on the city. The last item I wanted to talk about was, I did not put the executive and the appointive on this slide. I wanted to show you the profile of our unions. But for our executive and appointed this last year, the executive goal was about a $2.5 million reduction goal, and the exec, appointive was about a $3.1 million goal. We had, if you put it in the same context as the rest of the unions, we were flat, plus probably 3 and 4% for those. And in the last few months, we, through the city manager's office, have been going through a reorganization process, process which will have us meet our goals for this year and this next fiscal year through reductions and, and several other items. And lastly, we also, during this reorganization process, have taken on kind of a restructuring of our compensation and our benefits program, more comprehensive look, again, taking a look at a future employee, new employee format, which we think's important for the city going forward.
Any questions or comments at this time?
Mayor Goodman.
Counselor Wilson, and then Counselor Manette.
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. Well, first of all, Betsy, you started off your presentation by going back to what Mark had said about really emphasizing the fact that a couple of years ago, we were projecting five-year shortfalls at the $250 million mark, and that because of the efforts that we've made, both as an internal organization, as well as the efforts with our bargaining units, as well as our appointive and executives, that we've reduced that projected shortfall to about $66 million. And I was going to emphasize that when you were talking, Mark, but the mayor was giving you so much trouble, I didn't want to give many more opportunities.
It didn't make any difference. You couldn't hear him if we responded.
But, Betsy, you did a great job by, by emphasizing that, because I think that's a, a big achievement. I, I want to thank you, Betsy, and you, Dan, and your staffs, because you guys do phenomenal work. These are not easy things. When we go to our employees and ask them not only to not take and accept raises, but to take reductions. And Tracy, I'm looking at you and, and your colleague, I want to thank you personally for all of your efforts. I remember a couple of years ago, when we started these talks, we were criticized for not being fair between the different bargaining units. And I think that it's different this time. We've really been somewhat equal. There's differences between the units, but overall, we're really pretty close between our employees and what we ask them to give up. So, it's different now. I don't think we can be criticized for treating one section of our employees much differently than the others. We went to all of our employees and asked them, because we didn't have a choice, to work with us and agree to certain concessions. So, once again, Tracy, and I don't remember your colleague's first name.
Eric.
Eric, thank you so much for your hard work. The concessions are savings both today and for the future, and that was very, very important to me personally, because I've been advocating the new employees, we're, we're calling him or her, because we not only can't afford to pay our employees today what we've been paying them, but we certainly can't afford to pay in the future. And the concessions that your unit made, the POA, are unique in nature, because I think that more of your concessions talk and address this new employee. And Dan, you used the word "model" a couple of times. You said that you hope that this contract, should this council vote to approve it, is going to act as a model for future discussions with our other bargaining units. And finally, the way I look at this is that all of our employees have made sacrifices. We have about 3,000 or so employees in the City of Las Vegas, and our bargaining units make up about, what, 2,600 or so, Betsy? So, between the four bargaining units, the LVCEA, the IAFF, the POA, and the PPA, all of those employees represented by those unions have agreed to make less money and have less benefits. And then I wanted to point out what you brought out too, Dan, which is, we can't forget our appointives and executives, which are about 300 or 400 employees, Betsy? What's the number?
Well, we're much closer to 250 now.
Okay.
We've, we've had close to 20% reduction in those ranks.
Okay. But that's 250 people that are not members of a bargaining unit, that we basically reduced their packages. I know some of our employees, and some of them are in this room, have not had a single raise or increase for three years. So, I don't want to leave those folks out. So, congratulations to you folks and to Tracy and Eric. I think this is a great step in the right direction, and we appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you. Counselor Manette.
Thank you, Mayor. Dan, the, the portion about PERS, you're right, is that's very significant. And I, I don't know how many other bargaining units out there actually split their PERS contribution. I doubt if it's many, but my question is, if there are future increases mandated by PERS, are those also split 50-50?
Correct.
They are? Okay.
Any other comments or questions? All right, Dan, have a motion, please?
Yes.
Again, Your Honor, I want to thank those participating in this negotiations, the union, as well as our city staff, my most would be to accept this as presented to us today.
Do you folks want to be heard?
Yes.
Okay.
Tracy Valenzuela, President of the Las Vegas Peace Officers Association. I'd like to start by saying that the resolved determination and patience of the Vice President, Eric Frettenberg, here, my entire POA board and membership have, during this long, difficult year, has been extraordinary. So, I'd like to say thank you to the board and the membership. It has allowed us to reach the agreement before you today. I'd also like to say, I think there had been the perception that the POA was not willing to help the city obtain a sustainable future. We have always been willing to help. Initially, when we came to you, we came with a proposal of our overtime reduction, and that was not acceptable alone by itself. Since then, we have implemented that overtime reduction plan and have been working with a reduced staff, and it has, has had a significant impact on DNE's correction overtime budget. So, I do want to acknowledge the staff for working with the reduced staffing.
Who's bigger than this?
Also, I wanted to thank the city management team, specifically Dan Tarwood and Morgan Davis, for helping us to come to a fair and equitable agreement. So, thank you, Dan and Morgan, Betsy, Chief Coin. So, my recommendation or request would be that they're approved, we receive approval from the council today. Thank you.
All right. There's a motion?
I would call for the vote, Your Honor.
All right, let's go, please. Motion carries.
Your excuse.
Thank you.
What I've been hearing is a lot of doom and gloom. Y'all need to get away from that, because a couple of years down the road, things can get better. Okay? That's all I got to say. Things get better down the road.
Thanks.
I hear too much doom and gloom. I don't like that.
Will excuse the mayor and the city manager. Our next item would be item number 63, discussion of possible action regarding a six-month review of a temporary Class 3A second-hand dealer license jewelry manufacturer exchange doing Inc., new business head jewelry manufacturers exchange Inc., 8550 West Charleston Boulevard. This is in Suite 108, Counselor Wilson's Ward. And Mr. DeFiore, please.
Mayor, pro temp, and members of the council. Ms. Tigert, who is the licensee, is not able to attend today. I have a letter from her. Essentially, she is a schoolteacher in the school district, and they're doing some interim testing yesterday and today, and today was very imperative that, that she remain on board with testing. I do have Mr. Fallen, Michael Fallen, who is the manager in the audience, and he is here to represent Ms. Tigert. Essentially, this was asked for a six-month review due to the nature of the business that they operate, which is second-hand dealers, Class 3A, new and used items, which include jewelry and watches and so forth and so on. This is up in the Ward 2 district, and the concerns that we had with the previous owner at this location was that the licensee did not want to have a key employee come forward. Ms. Tigert, at that time, was an employee of the previous owner. When they decided not to come forward, they actually withdrew and moved out. Their base of operation was Plano, Texas. So, coming forward with their application, one of the former consultants for that was Ms. Tigert's ex-husband. Because of the nature of their operation, we had concerns that, that this was maybe a carryover from the previous owner. The conditions that we had on the license coming forward for this six-month review included that Ms. Tigert sever, sever all affiliation with Mr. Dennis, her ex-husband. That has been done, and it's reiterated in the letter that I'm going to have submitted for the record, and the other-
Counselor, have you seen the letter?
No, I don't think I have. It was just submitted to me this morning. It was just submitted to me this morning. The other condition that we did have on this license is that they follow all business license codes, and that they report all of their daily purchases to the Metropolitan Police Department Property Crimes Division at 12:00 noon, like they're supposed to do. We have contacted Metro Property Crimes, and they have maintained compliance with the reporting conditions, two to three, sometimes four times a week. So all of the conditions that we had in place six months ago have been complied with. I'm willing to make a recommendation today to move forward with a permanent license for this location and this business, and that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Mr. DiFiore? See none? Would you have anything to say, sir?
Absolutely not. I mean, I just...
We need your name for record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Michael Fallen? Absolutely not. We have worked in earnest to be in compliance and to meet the terms of what we established here at the last meeting.
Thank you.
So that we wouldn't be in violation in any way.
Councilman Wilson?
Thank you. Mr. Fallen, it sounds like you have done what you said you were gonna do.
Absolutely.
You and Sharon, and my applause goes out to you and Sharon for recognizing the conditions that were placed on you and taking them seriously, and it sounds like your business is doing pretty good.
Thank you so much.
So I... Jim, your recommendation is for a permanent license?
Permanent license with no conditions.
Okay, that would be my motion at this time.
Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries.
And I do want to make this letter part of the record. It's a very nice letter from Sharon.
Thanks so much.
Next item under Public Works is item 64th, an abandoned item. Discussion on possible action under request to install speed humps on Waldman Avenue between Rancho Drive and Shadow Lane. $10,400 neighborhood traffic management program, this is in Ward One. Mr. Strabanti, please.
Mayor pro temp and council, folks, I'm out this department for the works. This past June, we received the request... This past June, the city received the request for speed humps along Waldman between Rancho Drive and Shadow Lane. Staff went out there, did a traffic study. This traffic study indicated that the traffic volumes along this section of Waldman were between 400 and 600 vehicles a day. The traffic speed was between 32 and 44 miles per hour. This is a 25 mile per hour street. On June 11th, we sent ballots to the 30 property owners to live along Waldman, to ask their opinion for the installation of speed humps. We received 17 responses, 16 in favor and one opposed. At the September Traffic and Park Commission, this item was heard for this request. The Traffic and Park Commission unanimously recommended the approval of speed humps. At the request of some of the residents of the neighborhood, there was a meeting on October 18th at the Presbyterian Church, attended by Councilwoman Tarkanian, staff, and some of the residents. At this meeting, some of the residents were requesting that, in lieu of the four speed humps that were recommended to Traffic and Park Commission, that three humps be considered. We sent a ballot out on November 8th to the 30 property owners along this corridor, requesting their opinion on the three humps versus four. We received back 23 responses, 16 in favor of three humps, seven in favor of four humps. So based on the response back to the ballot, staff recommended the installation of three speed humps.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. The public wish to speak on this item. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I have met with Councilwoman Tarkanian and staff two or three times on this item. Councilwoman's not here today. She wanted me to reiterate, and I know that Councilwoman does a good job on her homework. She really goes out, she works the neighborhood. I have a map here, I'd like to show if I could. Can we put this on overhead? This is a cut-through street between Rancho and Shadow Lane, and the traffic which Jorge gave us is, to me, outlandish in a neighborhood like this. This is an older neighborhood. We have had many issues in this neighborhood. This is a neighborhood where they wanted to go privatize with their gated community, and they can never really get together. But on this here, the people that live on this street have come together, and they do want the speed humps. And the speed humps that I have in my ward have really been successful, and I know that the people that are living along here will certainly appreciate the speed humps as they're when they're put down. This is a neighborhood in change. It used to be an older neighborhood. Now we have a lot of young families with small children living on this street, and it is a thoroughfare. And I've been over there, and I've drove the street, and I really feel like that Lois has done her job, and I want to commend her and her staff for working like this. I also want to put on record that if some of the other neighbors feel like they want to have some type of traffic mitigation devices installed in their neighborhood, or changes made, they can certainly go through the same thing that the neighbors on Waldman did. They can make application, and I'm sure that Councilwoman Tarkanian will be more than willing to meet with them. So my motion today is to follow staff's recommendation and public commissioner's recommendation for approval of three speed humps on Waldman Avenue between Rancho and Shadow Lane. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, make your motion, make your vote, please. Please post. Thank you. Motion carries. Item 65, items 65 through 67, bills 2010-46 through 2010-40 are eligible for adoption at a later meeting. New bills, item 68 and 69, bills 2010-49, 2010-50 will be heard at the recommending committee meeting on Tuesday, November 30th, 2010. Can we have these bills read, please?
Yes. Bill number 2010-49, in ordinance to grant a non-exclusive franchise to Southwest Gas Corporation to provide natural gas transmission and distribution services within the corporate limits of the city in accordance with that certain franchise agreement between the city and Southwest Gas Corporation, and to provide for other related matters. Bill number 2010-50, in ordinance to allow, under limited circumstances, the expansion, enlargement, or alteration of certain non-conforming sexually oriented businesses located within the downtown Centenia Plan area, and to provide for other related matters.
Councilman Barlow? Councilman Anthony, will you be available to hear these items?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. We'll begin the afternoon portion of our agenda, but before we do so, I would like to clarify the record. I had asked that the items 58 and 59 be trailed to 1 o'clock starting time. I'm now going to direct that they be trailed to the end of the agenda. We'll decide whether or not it's before citizens' participation or after. Do I need a motion for that?
No.
All right, very good. Then we'll call item number 70. Any items from the afternoon session that the council, staff, and/or the applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor pro temp.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have item number 105, Special Use Smith 36142, applicant Verizon Wireless Owner, Aries Holdings Inc., 8430 West Lake Mead Boulevard. Deputy wants that to be tabled. Item 106, Site Development Review 39469, applicant Team Ford Owner, Ryan M E L L C, are at 5446 Drexel Road. Councilman Ross wants that to be held in abeyance until our December 1st, 2010 meeting. Items 109 through 112 is GPA 39489, rezoning 39490, variance 39492, and Site Development Review 39491, applicant Secoria Electric, owner Sage Brush Property Veterans LLC, 4485 North Rainbow Boulevard. Deputy would like that to be held in abeyance until December 15th, 2010 meeting. Items 117 and 118, variance 39433, Special Use Smith 39432, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner DNW Inc., 120 North Jones Boulevard. Councilwoman Tarkanian would like that to be held in abeyance until our 7:15, 2010 meeting. And 120, ROC, reconsideration of condition 39470, applicant Richmond American Homes, owner Providence 207 LLC, 20.9 acres adjacent to the southwest corner of Farm Road and Wallop Highway. Councilman Ross would like that to be held in abeyance until our December 1st, 2010 meeting. At this time, are there any other items, councilmembers? Hearing none, Your Honor, make a motion to bring these items forward and take the appropriate action, please.
Okay, let's go to that, please. Motion carries. Thank you. As to items 101 to 104, the applicant is tied up at this point in time. If they're not here when we're going to call those items, we will trail those to...
What item, please?
101 to 104. We'll trail those if the applicant isn't here at the time that the item would be called. Thank you. All right. Vote item 71. This is a hearing and possible action to consider the appeal of notice of violation to evade nuisance for property located 628 South Las Vegas Boulevard, weeds alternatives. The property owner is Garson Venture LLC, and the property owner is Steven J. Vogt. This is in Ward Three. Anybody here want to hear from the applicant? Mr. Lewis or Mr. Still?
Yeah, Mayor, Dan Still, City Attorney's Office. We have been in contact with Jim Levitt, who was the attorney of record the last time we were here, on November 3rd. He only appeared for the limited purpose of that hearing. I spoke with Mr. Levitt this morning, and Mr. Voight, he did not know if he would show up or not. My recommendation is that you proceed in abstention. Mr. Voight has noticed of this. He's not here. Mr. Levitt represented immediately, he talked to Mr. Voight and informed him to be here, for whatever reason, he's chosen not to be here. We have, Jim DiFiore is prepared to provide a summary of the business licensing violations, and Officer Guara is here to provide a summary of the nuisance violations at that property, and then you can proceed to hear that appeal based upon their evidence and make whatever decision you think is appropriate.
All right, well, the mayor pro temp, what is your red flag?
Your Honor, we've had 14 visits at this location at a cost of about $180 a visit. That's what it costs us to go out there. What I would like to see done today, however we have to go about getting there, is I would like to put a, I forget the civil penalties, because...
Councilman? Before we get to the conclusion, I think we need to have some evidentiary foundation from...
I was just trying to explain to the mayor what I would like to say.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
I would just like to have a lien put on the property or against him for $2,500 for our cost of going out there and trying to get this problem solved. But our, our, we have to get there.
All right, I think if that's the case, we have to have a hearing. Mr. DiFiore, we'll proceed with Mr. Vogt not being represented and not being present. I am relying, however, on the representation by Mr. Still, that in fact, he hasn't had notice. Thank you. Mr. DiFiore.
Mayor, members of the council, as Mr. Still has provided the council with some information, there has been a constant problem at this location, at least for the last six months, and in including the chronic nuisance that were here today, there have been business license problems. Business license problems with complaints from the constituents and some victims that have been encouraged by Mr. Vogt to actually use a substance that was not intended for consumption. There have been numerous... was not intended for consumption. There have been numerous inspections at this location. We even had to do an emergency suspension of the license going back about two weeks ago. Mr. Vogt was given an opportunity to appeal that suspension before the city manager's office last Tuesday of last week, and he failed to appear.
Oh, was there a hearing in his absence with the city manager?
No, there was not. There was...
Because I know that Ms. Revell had indicated to me that evening that she thought she would be rather late engaged in an administrative hearing, but that never took place.
That never took place. As a matter of fact, it was rescheduled for Tuesday of this week. However, at the end of last week, Mr. Vogt submitted to my office a cancellation of the license that he was intending to appeal the emergency suspension on.
He did cancel the license then?
Yes, he did.
So basically, it's a moot issue as far as the license is concerned.
That is, that's correct.
And basically, Mr. Still, at this point in time, with this state of the record, with the canceled license, can there be a suggestion as to amount of a fine? Mr. Still?
Sorry, Your Honor, I'm just getting to giving to Mr. DiFiore the form that Mr. Vogt provided to business licensing, giving up his license.
Right.
Nonetheless, I think it's important that we at least have just a very simple evidentiary foundation as to the why you're making the decision you're going to make.
All right, fine. Can you present any evidence as to why a fine should or should not be imposed?
Well, I think one thing that you need to speak about is that he was operating without the appropriate licenses beyond what you've already discussed. There were additional licenses that he was required to have, operating beyond the scope of the license that he was issued and operating under, correct?
Is that correct, Mr. DiFiore?
Yes, it is.
Is that sufficient, Mr. Still?
Yes.
Very good.
I would like, if I could, I'd like to ask code enforcement. We went out there, remember, 14 times. Is that correct?
Counselman Reese, the answer to that is that it was between business licensing enforcement officers and Metro Downtown Area Command officers doing various enforcement at the location. There was no code enforcement officers involved in this particular case. Just so the record is clear.
All right, before we hear the motion, I'm going to incorporate by reference the testimony of Dr. Sands from the prior hearing, which resulted in the taking of the business license.
And if we can also incorporate the document that Mr. DiFiore is in his hands.
And the documents that Ms. Bridges has made part of this record.
This is Mr. Vogt's.
Part of the backups are on this item.
Right, very good, but that will be considered as part of this item.
Correct.
This is Mr. Vogt's request to cancel his license.
Very good. Mayor Protem, do you have a motion?
Yes, Your Honor. With the civil penalties, we could put a lien of $8,500. I'm going to ask that we drop the civil penalties and just try to get our cost that we incurred going out there and trying to enforce a proper business in Las Vegas, which would be about $2,500. So my motion would be to assist a fine of $2,500 on this piece of property.
All right, very good.
Can we just clarify the record real quickly? Mr. Vogt does not own this property. He was a, he was a tenant. He has been evicted as of a few minutes ago, I think. The property owner's here. I don't think it would be fair to have the property owner incur that lien.
You're right.
We could make it a personal obligation against Mr. Vogt, and our office can then proceed to collect along with business licensing.
With that correction, that would be my motion.
All right, impose a $2,500 fine on Mr. Vogt.
And we're denying the appeal, correct?
Yes.
Denying the appeal. All right, let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. And the record should also reflect that Councilwoman Tarkanian is excused from this session as well. Item 72 is hearing and possible action on 45-day review for the vacant or abandoned buildings located at 4152 Silver Dollar Avenue Units 24578, 4168 Silver Dollar Avenue Units 1 to 4, 6 to 8, 4186 Silver Dollar Avenue Units 1 to 7. The property owners are RFH, LA, PAZ LLC., and this is in Ward One. Is anybody here on behalf of the property owner? All right, Mr. Smith?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Devin Smith, Manager of Neighborhood Response. As you said, this is a review of conditions. A little background on the property. As the subject properties were determined to be substandard, dangerous, and declared a public nuisance as defined in Las Vegas Municipal Code Title 9.04.020 and Section 202 of the Uniform Housing Code. A nuisance housing code notice in order to comply was mailed to the property owners to correct the nuisance per 904 graffiti, refuse of waste, weeds, turf, Las Vegas Municipal Code 13.28, street naming and address assignment, 16.20 housing codes and Title 19. Today's hearing is to review the status regarding the violations of the civil and civil penalties from the public hearing item on March 4th, 2009, and April 15th, 2009. The recommendation is that we review the status of the violation listed in the notice in order to comply mailed on September 11th, 2008, and the notice in order regarding vacant and abandoned mailed on August 11th, 2008, and recommend a one-year review.
All right, are there any questions to Mr. Smith?
Just a few comments around me. Councilman Tarkanian, who I have met with her staff, and I am going to be handling this for her. When, Mr. Smith, did we impose a $500 a month fine on this property to pay his fees that he owes? Do you remember?
Are you a group wind?
Yes.
I could, Counselman, I can answer that. September 16th, 2009, Councilwoman Tarkanian at that meeting imposed $500 a month fine that he should be paying.
Okay, so right now, he owes us about $29,000 plus, about half a million dollars in, well, half a million dollars and two cents in civil penalties that was assessed to him that we said if he would pay the other, then we would forego the civil penalties.
That was the discussion, yes, and so far, he's made one payment of $2,500, and there has been no monthly payments since that time. Currently, the unpaid fees that he would owe on the $29,000 would be $27,194.26.
How much again?
$27,194.26.
Okay, this has been an ongoing problem with Councilman Tarkanian and her staff for the last four or five years. At this time, is the property up discreet? Is it in good conditioning and...
We had a complaint that one of my officers went out and investigated the other day that's actually a leak that is coming from an occupied unit on the upstairs level. We've notified Mr. Henriot that he needed to take care of that, per that would be part of the homeowners association's responsibility to fix it. As of now, I do not believe that has been fixed. I know that he's been noticed, but I do not believe it's been fixed.
Mr. Still, is there any way we could make this a little bit tighter, where we could try to collect this $27,000?
Counselman, yes. I, if the gentleman would have appeared today, I had prepared a confession of judgment and a promissory note for him to execute so that we can reduce this down to writing. I went back through the record, all the way back from March 4th, 2009, to March 17th, 2010. There were one, two, three, four, that's five different hearings to evaluate what had been said on the record. Basically, Councilwoman required him to pay $500 a month, starting September 16th, and Mr. Smith's already outlined how much he has paid. I was looking at the book to see what kind of notice he got of this hearing, because he's always appeared at the previous hearings. I'm not sure what notice was sent and when, but I think that maybe we could obey this until next meeting, give me an opportunity to try to contact him and present this confession of judgment, and then give him notice of a hearing next, or December 1st, where the council can decide if that's the way they want to move forward on this or take any other appropriate action.
What can we do without him being, not being here?
Your Honor, if I may, we sent the letter to his last known mailing address. We made personal contact with him today, and he notified us that he had moved, changed his mailing address. So we made contact with him this morning, advising him that he had this hearing today, and he is not responsive to showing up.
Based upon that, Counselman Reese, you have a few different options. I mean, you could impose some additional fines. I don't know if that gets us where you want to go. As I understand it from Mr. Smith, the property's in compliance, but the problem is, he still owes the city $27,000 plus dollars. We could pursue that in a civil case against him as a collection matter. We could lien, I think, have liens been filed on this property, Mr. Smith?
Yes, it has.
Okay, so the liens, we've already got the security, but that doesn't, that doesn't mean that we can't use the additional remedy of pursuing litigation against him to recover those monies.
Mr. Mayor, it looks to me like that by even imposing another penalty on him today is just blowing smoke. And so I would really like to maybe hold this in advance for two weeks and pursue what you were talking about, that personal judgment against him. He needs to pay this money. I would hate to see us close up these units. We have, we have to make him understand that he owes us money. He has to pay us ASAP.
All right, that's the motion, then, to evade for two weeks. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 73 is a public hearing and possible action to consider the reported expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at 629 Line Shack Lane in the amount of $2,455.14 and assess a maximum of $25,050 in daily civil penalties. The property owner is Juan C. Ramirez, and this is in Ward Three. It's a public hearing, which I now declare open.
Again, Mayor and Council, Devin Smith, Manager of Neighborhood Response. The purpose and background is the condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Services declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Neighborhood Services hired Lune's Construction to remove all trash, debris, and dead vegetation from all yards, remove non-permitted detached shed and rear yard, board all open doors and windows on the main structure, and post no trespassing signs. To date, there have been seven inspections conducted at this location. The estimated value of the property based on zillow.com is $66,000. The recommendation is that the city council approve the report of expenses to include a $677.51 invoice for Lune's Construction in addition to other fees assessed for a total of $2,455.14, and consider assessing a maximum of $25,050 in daily civil penalties.
All right. Any questions to Mr. Smith?
Yes, Your Honor, if I could. Is the applicant here today? In lieu of not having the applicant here, I am ready to go forward, Your Honor.
All right. Vote's a public hearing. If anyone would like to be heard.
Thank you. Todd Farlock, 240 North 19th Street. Do we have video of this?
There was no video. There should have been a PowerPoint presentation. No, it's not.
It's not occupied? My thing, Counselman, is...
There you go.
I think these places need to be cleaned up as quick as possible and occupied. There is no reason in the world that a house like this should be vacant when we got people out on the streets. I mean, something has to be done. I'll initially, I'll address this more as system participation, but I mean, this is a crime.
And anybody else?
Well, I'm just following up on what you said, but since you showed the picture, you know, there's always circumstances surrounding everything, but right now, you're out to get your money, and we hope that that's the main purpose for the city to collect what's owed them. And I'm sure something will be worked out if it's a nice-looking home. Is it a nice-looking home, sir? Well, I'm sure it'll be, remember, we're falling on a hard time for us homes concerned in the valley anyway. So let's get real about it. Main thing right now, the city needs to get the money from the property as best it can. That's all I got to say. And thank you for showing the picture, sir.
Anybody else like to be heard? All right, then we'll close the public hearing.
Yes, Your Honor, my motion would be to assess $2,455.14 to get our money back and put a, maybe civil penalty on there, $25,050 at this time.
All right, that's the motion. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 74 is a public hearing and possible action to consider the reported expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at 1005 North 21st Street in the amount of $4,983.25 and assess a maximum of $24,550 in daily civil penalties. The property owners are Ingrid M. Morales and Jose Antonio Martinez, and this is in Ward Three. It's a public hearing, which is now declared open.
Your Honor, if I may briefly, the reason that we're showing this PowerPoint presentation instead of the video that we usually show is we were having some issues with our camera and the technology and what they're using. We're in the process of getting new cameras so we can actually film these again.
Very good.
So that's why we did the PowerPoint, and I just wanted to put that on the record in case you were wondering why it wasn't video as usual.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
The purpose and background is the condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Services declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Neighborhood Services hired Weaver Construction to cut and remove all high and dead vegetation from all yards and sidewalk area boarding the property and apply herbicide, paint over graffiti anywhere on property, remove room extension, board up all openings and windows on the main structure, and post no trespassing signs. To date, there have been 10 inspections conducted at this location. The value of the property based on zillow.com is $62,000. The recommendation is that the city council approve the report of expenses to include a $1,055 invoice for Weaver Construction in addition to other fees assessed for a total of $4,983.25 and consider assessing a maximum of $24,550 in daily civil penalties.
Thank you. Are there any questions to Mr. Smith? Vote's a public hearing. If anyone would like to be heard.
I'm going to be real swift, Mr. Mayor, and this is the same thing, but you got to collect your money, and there's hard times, and you haven't been able to reach the homeowner?
No. This is not a foreclosure.
Well, it's not a foreclosure, okay. But you can lean on it, whatever it takes to get your money, right?
That's not what we do here. We talk to the chair.
Oh, okay, well, through the chair, so all they can say, there's another one of those properties, you got to try to get your money.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard?
My name is the Lord Jesus Christ. Also known as our Joshua Collins. Of course, may you know the name Jesus comes from Joshua, Yeshua, but I just don't understand why, right now, we have 13,300 homeless people, I guess, in Las Vegas right now?
No, this is the wrong time for this, sir. This is on this particular item. We'll hear during the public comment.
Well, I was just going to say that...
Why don't you have a seat?
There's no reason for...
Why don't you have a seat, please?
Can I finish what I had to say?
No, you can't. Have a seat.
Why not? Why could he finish and I couldn't finish? That's not right.
Have a seat. I don't want to ask the marshal to have a seat. Have a seat, please. I'm trying to be nice. Have a seat.
I had a brief comment to state.
And you'll be able to...
The homeless should have someone to state, and this property could be that.
Have a seat, please. Are there any other people who'd like to be heard? Vote's a public hearing, then. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move to recover cost of abatement of $4,983.25 and assess a maximum of $24,550 as a daily civil penalty at this time.
Thank you. That's the motion. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 75 is a public hearing and possible action to consider the reported expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at 1105 Jimmy Avenue in the amount of $2,078.50 and assess a maximum of $22,550 in daily civil penalties. The property owner is Warner H. Robinson, and this is in Ward Five. It's a public hearing, which is now open.
Again, Mayor and Council, Devin Smith, Manager of Neighborhood Response. The condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Services declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Neighborhood Services hired Blas Janitorial Services to cut, remove all high grass and weeds on the entire property and apply herbicide. To date, there have been six inspections conducted at this location. The estimated value of the property based on zillow.com is $68,000. The recommendation is that the city council approve the report of expenses to include $350 invoice for Blas Janitorial Services in addition to other fees assessed for a total of $2,078.50 and consider assessing a maximum of $22,550 in daily civil penalties.
Thank you. Any questions to Mr. Smith or comments? Vote's a public hearing. If anyone would like to be heard.
Be real smooth, Mr. Mayor. All these problems, you know, the people are not showing up, you know, so it sounds like most of these problems, the owners don't have no more interest. And so you got to go out at the hard way. I'm sorry about that. But some of these are very nice-looking places, so if nobody shows up, then, you know, you got to do what you got to do. Sorry about that.
Anybody else? So now we'll close the public hearing. Counselman Farlock.
Yes, Mayor. Move to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
All right, let's vote, please. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries, thank you.
Your Honor, if I may, just for clarification, Councilman, was that the total daily civil penalties of twenty-two thousand five hundred and fifty?
It is accurate.
Thank you.
All right. Items seventy-six through eighty-six are on the consent agenda. They're considered to be routine. They're recommended for approval by the Department of Planning and Development. May I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda, items seventy-six through eighty-six, please?
Yes, Your Honor, make the motion to follow those, your recommendation, items seventy-six through eighty-six, please.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries, thank you. Items eighty-seven through one hundred may be considered in one motion, one vote. They're considered routine public hearing items with no condition changes. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda. Do any of the council members desire to have any item from eighty-seven through one hundred polled at this time for individual discussion? Councilman Farlow, did you vote?
Yeah, just a moment, Mayor.
So I'm going to read them all into the record then, unless somebody wants it polled, and I see none? All right, eighty-seven is GPA three nine three two six. The applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, requests for general plan amendment from PF Public Facilities to MXU, mixed use, on six point eight two acres at seven forty-one Veterans Memorial Drive and eight twenty-one North Las Vegas Boulevard in Ward Five. Eighty-eight is ZON three nine three two seven. The applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, requests for rezoning from CD Civic to C two, general commercial, on six point eight two acres at seven forty-one Veterans Memorial Drive and eight twenty-one North Las Vegas Boulevard in Ward Five. Eighty-nine is GPA three nine three three nine. The applicant, City of Las Vegas, the owner is NV Energy, requests for a general plan amendment from C Commercial to PF Public Facilities on point two five acres at three two five South Main Street in Ward Three. Number ninety is ZON three nine three four one. The applicant, City of Las Vegas, the owner, NV Energy, requests for rezoning from CM Commercial Industrial to CV Civic on point two five acres at three twenty-five South Main Street in Ward Three. Ninety-one is GPA three nine three four seven. The applicant, City of Las Vegas, the owner, NV Energy, requests for a general plan amendment from C Commercial and MXU, mixed use, to PF Public Facilities on point eight one acres at seven oh one South Main Street in Ward Three. Ninety-two is ZON three nine three four eight. The applicant, City of Las Vegas, the owner, NV Energy, requests for rezoning from CM Commercial Industrial to CV Civic on point eight one acres at seven oh one South Main Street in Ward Three. Ninety-three is GPA three nine three four nine. The applicant, City of Las Vegas, owner, NV Energy, requests for general plan amendment from MXU, mixed use, to PF Public Facilities on point one six acres at one thousand South First Street, Ward Three. Ninety-four is ZON three nine three five oh. The applicant, City of Las Vegas, the owner, NV Energy, requests for rezoning from CM Commercial Industrial to CV Civic on point one six acres at a thousand South First Street in Ward Three. Ninety-five is GPA three nine three five seven. The applicant, City of Las Vegas, the owner, NV Energy, requests for general plan amendment from MXU, mixed use, and C Commercial to PF Public Facilities on one point one nine acres at the southwest corner of Clark Avenue and Fourteenth Street in Ward Three. Ninety-six is ZON three nine three five eight. The applicant, City of Las Vegas, the owner, NV Energy, requests for general plan amendment from R two, medium-low density residential to CV Civic on one point one nine acres at the southwest corner of Clark Avenue and Fourteenth Street in Ward Three. Ninety-seven is RQR three nine four two four. The applicant is CBS Outdoor, the owner is Sahara Rancho Office Center LLC. Required review of an approved variance, which allowed a ninety-foot tall, fourteen-foot by forty-eight-foot off-premise sign on twelve point one six acres, on twelve point six acres at twenty-three twenty, South Rancho Drive in Ward One. Ninety-eight is RQR three nine four three five. Applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner Ernest A. Becker III. Required review of a previously approved special use permit, which allowed a forty-foot tall, fourteen-foot by forty-eight-foot off-premise sign at thirteen sixty-one South Decatur Boulevard in Ward One. Ninety-nine is SUP three nine one four three. The applicant is Cornerstone Company. The owner is Cheetac Development, Inc. Requests for special use permit for a proposed seven thousand square foot gun club skeet, target range, or archery club indoors at twenty-two thirty-three South Las Vegas Boulevard in Ward Three. One hundred is SUP three nine four one two. The applicant is The Gold Deposit. The owner, GGP Ivanhoe Two, Inc. Requests for special use permit for a second-hand dealer jewelry and precious metals at forty-three hundred Meadows Lane, Ward One. The planning commission and staff recommend approval for these items. All these items are public hearings, which I now declare open. Does anyone wish to be heard on any of these items?
I just want to say that you did a great job reading all of them, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
This is a public matter. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I complimented it. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Yvonne Du Plaine. I didn't know whether or not we were going to be able to talk at this meeting or not. I thought it was a discussion. In pertaining to item number ninety-nine, which is the Cornerstone Company's plans for a shooting range indoor located, which we are the closest property next to that, which is the Holiday House Motel, and we are not really opposed to this item, but the thing is, I did talk with Mr. Truesdale, and he did send me a letter. What concerns us is the noise factor coming from something like this.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Now, this is an older...
What we'll need to do is pull this one off the agenda and have you vote on the other items that are not, that don't have discussion with them.
Okay, that's fair. We'll be happy to hear from you, and we'll incorporate what you just said when I read the item into the record again, but at this time, we're going to have the mayor pro tem. Does anyone else want to be heard on any of these items? All right, seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing except on item number ninety-nine, and the mayor pro tem can make a motion to the other items.
Yes, Your Honor, I'm making motion to approve items eighty-seven through one hundred with exceptions of number ninety-nine with all conditions, please.
Very good. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Okay, ma'am, I'm going to read ninety-nine into the record. SUP three nine one four three. The applicant is Cornerstone Company. The owner is Cheetac Development, Inc. Requests for special use permit for a proposed seven thousand square foot gun club skeet, target range, or archery club indoor at twenty-two thirty-three South Las Vegas Boulevard in Ward Three. You indicated you're the closest neighbor. You're concerned about the noise factor.
Yes, we are. And I did talk to Mr. Truesdale about this, and he did send me a letter stating that construction operation of the shooting range will be, would be no disturbance to adjacent property owners per City of Las Vegas codes, which is well and good, but what we're concerned about is what happens when there is noise? What happens if it doesn't work out? And what the reason I'm bringing this up, you have specifications of what you want them to do and how you're going to keep the noise down. Are these going to be met? And I will bring up the situation, not to bring up old business, but if you remember, eight years ago, we were back in the alley putting up some gates. They were going to be crash gates in the alley that we approved and everything, and there were specifications that were supposed to be met for this. When I went back to the plans that we have here, for some strange reason, there was a three-wall dumpster container that was sitting back on a piece of the property back there. This was to be removed, so fire trucks would be able to turn around. This has not been removed. This is eight years ago. Now, this was a specification that was supposed to have been done...
Why didn't you let us know if this, eight years ago, this was happening, then?
Well, I thought that everything would have been done because you said it would be done. So, and the thing is, what I, why, the only reason I'm bringing this up now is the fact that you're going to be telling us, and they're going to be saying, you know, there's not going to be any noise. Are we going to be assured of that? Is anybody going to come out after it's open for a couple months to see if there's any noise?
Probably not. It's going to be up to you if there's a noise to rat them out.
Okay. I called the gun store, which is located on East Tropicana Avenue this afternoon, and spoke to somebody there, and I said, "Do you have a problem with your neighbors with any of this noise coming from your gun range there?" Her exact words were, "You can hear the machine guns, but it doesn't blast your eardrums." Now, I don't know exactly what that means, but it doesn't sound too good. So what I'm saying is that, you know, the assurance of what is going to happen after this goes through or this is built. This is a very old building that they're putting this in. I know it states that it's seven thousand...
Your Honor, I would like to hold this in abeyance for two weeks. I, you know, I talked to the gentleman. I've had issues with this lady before. She had brought up some issues, just like her talking about this thing eight years ago. I wish she'd told us about it eight years ago, so we could have corrected it then. That's why we do business around the city of Las Vegas. We don't wait for eight years to go out there and say, "Hey, we need to move this trash, trash dumpster." But this here, I have shot in indoor shoots throughout the city, throughout the county, and there never been a problem. There was a problem out there at the new gun range about noises. You can't hear it on the other side of the hill. So they do have ways of making these noise proof, okay? And I don't think you would hear it, but I want to have the person here and have him tell you that rather than me telling you that.
Because, you see, they have...
I think they're hearing it.
They...
That's good.
Okay. Say your name for the record, please, and tell the good lady why it's going to be silent as a mouse.
Justin Michaels, ninety-nine oh one Covington Cross Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant. We will build this according to city code, which I believe you guys specify your requirements for having an indoor shooting range. This building will be renovated. It's not, we're not going to essentially, the tenant isn't going to essentially insert a range into an old facility. We will have to make it modern and meet your building codes to obviously abide by safety and noise.
Can you assure her that she can't hear it?
Yes.
All right, so if you hear it, call the councilman.
Well, I won't wait eight years, that's for sure, because I hope I hear it before then.
Now, he's available day or night, I promise you that.
And the property owner intends to continue operating the motel, which it wouldn't be in their best interest to have a noisy gun range located on the same parcel if they wanted to have a motel for...
Well, yes, because your rooms are a bit closer than our rooms are.
Correct.
We just sit on the other side of where your rooms are going to be, so, you know, that's the only reason. We're really not opposed to what you're doing, it's just the idea that we want to really be assured that this is going to be something that we can handle.
I appreciate that, too. Councilman Ross.
Ma'am, I want to assure you as well, I have shot at every gun range in this county, and even...
You still have a lot to shoot.
Even the machine guns at the gun store you mentioned in East Tropicana, you can't hear those. You can't hear those on the parking lot.
Well, you're inside when you're shooting. Have you been outside?
No, you can't hear them out in the parking lot. I would say that's an incorrect statement, because I've been to that gun range many times. And I assure you, for one, as a public servant here, that both Mayor Pro Tem and I'll probably be, both be down there shooting guns when this thing opens, so we'll be the ones to let you know.
Okay, well, don't go down there. Come to their places.
No, that's what I'm saying, we're coming to this one.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for coming down. Thank you very much.
I would move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of this item. It goes to planning commission with maybe a six-month review.
Very good.
Sir? Sir, with a six-month review.
Very good. Let's vote on that, please.
If I may, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor?
Yes.
Would that be a six-month review by administratively or at a public...
Back at City Council.
At a public hearing of the City Council.
From the day they open.
Of the issuance of the business license.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Okay, please vote. Post. Motion carries, thank you. Okay, one oh one, that's the item we were going to trail, but the parties are here, so we'll call one oh one, one oh two, one oh three, and one oh four. One oh one is GPA three seven five nine nine, request to amend a portion of the Centennial Hills Sector Plan, the general plan from GC General Commercial to SC Service Commercial. One oh two is ZON thirty-seven six hundred, request for rezoning from C two General Commercial to C one Limited Commercial. One oh three is SUP three seven six oh one, request for special use permit for a senior citizen apartment used with waivers to allow apartments on the ground floor where none are permitted, a primary resident or guest entryway in conjunction with commercial uses, and a front elevation that does not highlight the difference in uses. One oh four is SDR three seven six oh two, request for site development plan review for a three-story, thirty-seven-foot, one-hundred-and-fifty-two-unit senior citizen apartment complex. The application is Ovation Development for both items, and the owner is Jimmy Lee for item one oh one, and Low Mountain Apartments one LLC and Jimmy Lee for items one oh two and one oh four. The project is located on one point seven seven acres located along the south side of Low Mountain Road, approximately one-hundred-and-fifty-eight feet east of Rainbow Boulevard. The planning commission and staff recommend approval of all items. These items are in Ward Six. They're public hearings, which I now declare open. Are you representing the applicant?
Yes. Good afternoon, Your Honor, members of the council. Mark Fiorentino, I'm going to attempt to stand in for my partner Jennifer Lazovich on this and do my best not to screw up an awful lot of hard work that's been already put into this application. We've been working very closely with Councilman Ross and your staff. We wanted to thank both of them for their hard work on this. Staff recommends approval, the planning commission recommended approval. All of the conditions are acceptable to us, so I was going to just ask for your approval and avoid having to trail it unless there are serious issues you can't address.
All right. Are there any questions to Mr. Fiorentino? Folks, a public hearing, if anyone would like to be heard.
It's in planning and staff agreed, so I guess it's up there. Sounds good to me.
Anybody else want to be heard? We'll close the public hearing, then. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Fiorentino, for being here representing this Lazovich. Just for Councilman Anthony's benefit, this does border our wards, and just so he understands, this project is a senior project, and the developer of those apartment buildings there on Sahara has done a fabulous job. He's the same developer that wants to develop this corner as well into senior housing, senior living, which is a much-needed asset in both of our wards. So with that, Your Honor, I would move to follow planning commission's and staff's recommendation for approval of the gen item one oh one.
Okay, let's vote on that, please. Post.
And likewise, move to follow planning and staff's recommendation to approval of one oh two.
Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
And move to follow planning and staff's recommendation on one oh three.
Let's vote. Post, please. Motion carries.
Do you want to vote for me, Mayor?
Yes.
You didn't show up.
And Director Wheeler, you'll get on one oh four as well. Then, Your Honor, I would move to follow planning commission and staff's recommendation for approval of one oh four as well.
Okay, let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
107 and 108. 107 is GPA 39192, request for general plan amendment from PF, Public Facilities, to C, commercial in Ward Five. 108 is ZON 39193, request for rezoning from CV, civic, to C2, general commercial. The applicant owner is City of Las Vegas. The project is located on 5.76 acres on the south side of US 95, east of Casino Center Boulevard. The planning commission and staff recommend approval of both items. These items are in Ward Five. They're public hearings, which I now declare open. Is anybody representing the applicant, the City of Las Vegas, on this one?
Sir, Mayor and Council, these items are being brought forward so as to redesignate parcels that have been utilized for civic purposes that are anticipated not to do so in the future. And if I may, they are on your, your, um, this agenda so that I may make a correction and add a condition, if I may, for item 107, the general plan amendment, that the approval should be for parcels 13934501004 and 008, and 13934512001 and 005, to be designated mixed-use, M X U. Parcel 13934510045 shall be designated C, commercial. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Would you like to be heard, sir?
I do have a question on this now. Mr. Mayor, you said this, this property belonged to the city, right?
Yes.
And so y'all, you know, the zoning and whatever way.
Correct.
Because you got, uh, planning and staff, you know, approving of it, and then y'all the owner of it. So hey, what you got there sounds like a good thing, but remember, the city does own it. If you own it, I mean, the public own it, I mean, the citizens.
This could be an easy one for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else want to be heard? All right. We'll close the public hearing. Councilor Barlow. This is an easy one?
I'm very optimistic.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
Okay. That's on 107. Let's vote on that.
As amended, sir?
As amended.
Thank you.
107, yes. Please vote. Post. Motion carries. And 108, please.
Call for approval, as amended.
Okay. Let's vote, please. Post.
No, they don't post it.
Great. It's. Motion carries.
Come up late.
Okay. One, let's see. Up to 110. Nope.
113.
113 and 114. 113 is ZON 39455, request for rezoning from RE, Residence Estates, to PD, Plan Development. 114 is SDR 39453, request for site development plan review for proposed 250,267 square foot shopping center. The applicant owner is Grand Canyon Village Square LLC. The project is located on a portion of 25.48 acres of the northwest corner of Horse Drive and Oso Blanco Road. The planning commission and staff recommend approval of both items. These items are in Ward Six. They're public hearings, which are now declared open.
Good afternoon again, Your Honor. Mark Fiorentino. It's my pleasure to stand here today, um, with, uh, Mr. Hank Gordon. Um, I represent, uh, the proposed developer, which is Larch Properties. I know you are familiar with Larch and Mr. Gordon. His, uh, family's been developing and operating, uh, commercial centers in the city in Clark County for a number of years. And we're happy to be before you today to present, uh, the very first step in what we hope will be, um, one of his best projects here in the city. Um, staff recommends approval of the application. The planning commission recommends approval. This is really, uh, mostly an administrative matter to zone a piece that is in conformance with the plan out there. Uh, this property, a portion of it is already zoned. We're, uh, zoning the rest of it in confluence of the plan. Um, all of the conditions recommended by staff are acceptable to us. As I understand it, they have a, a revision, which I believe is also going to be acceptable to us. And we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
You have a question?
All right.
Mr. Gordon, how are you, sir? I just have a question. Are you, are you optimistic, optimistic about this? Because you go all over the valley and see these shopping centers that are sitting there with nothing in them.
Well, Councilman Reese, uh, we, uh, we're probably one of the few developers left in Las Vegas that has looked for the positive future in this area. That is in the Las Vegas area.
Well, I'm proud of you for even wanting to do it at this time.
And, uh, we're willing to put up, we bought this property back in, uh, I think July. And, uh, it demonstrates that we're willing to put our money where our mouth is and, uh, go forward with the development. Uh, once we get the zoning, we can start talking to retailers and, uh, hopefully, uh, create goods and services in an area that's presently not being served. Uh, we could use a few more houses out there as well. But, uh, we envision some really good retailers come into that area. And as most of you people on the council know, we are not merchant developers. We don't build and sell properties. We keep them for long-term family investment. So, uh, this amongst four other properties we've bought over the last year for future development kind of demonstrates our company's desire to, uh, continue in an atmosphere of recession and 14% unemployment. We really believe in the future of the city, and we're going to continue marching down that path.
Well, I congratulate you for being so optimistic. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I think you're being realistic, too.
I'm sorry?
I believe you're being realistic as well.
Thank you.
I think it's a very pragmatic decision, and I think that it's going to pay off.
The only difference is the last time I appeared before you, I didn't have gray hair. I weighed 15 pounds less and didn't have hearing aids on.
Well, you have to see my barber about the gray hair. Very good. Any, uh, anybody else? Uh, yes, a public hearing?
You absolutely can.
Now, these are the kind that I like. Ask them, hey, you hear what the man said, no doom and gloom. I keep telling you all that. Hey, thank you, sir, and the best of luck. You're going to make it.
Councilor Barlow?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I don't know if all of the members of the planning commission know that Mr. Gordon was a former, or of the council, know that Mr. Gordon was a former metal member of the planning commission. He served us well, and this goes to show that he puts his money where his heart is. And I thank him for that very much. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? We'll close the public hearing then. This is, uh, let's see. Councilor Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Gordon, your heart must be in the northwest.
Thank you.
I can't think of a, a more appropriate location for this use. Uh, they're at Horse Drive and US 95. And, uh, homes will be coming. Uh, just to let you know, uh, home builders are back at my office again, and that's a, that's a promising sign. Uh, you've been a wonderful partner in, uh, in this community with us, and I wish you all the luck of the world. Uh, thank you very much for continuing what you're doing in the city of Las Vegas.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Councilman Ross. Actually, uh, we have been in touch with the, uh, uh, Carwin advisor who've taken over for the land around us that was foreclosed on. And we're working with them as to far, trying to develop a architectural theme, landscape and so forth, so it'll look like it's compatible to the balance of the homes when they come in. And, uh, uh, this, in my opinion, uh, having been doing this for around 53 years, I hope you accept that that's credible, that this is the best shopping center site in Clark County that is not built on.
How about that?
And, uh, especially when the freeway off and on ramps are completed imminently, I think, next month.
Yeah. That's why I can't, I can't help, I can't think of a better place to put this, this use and, and all the uses that you may have there. So I wish you all the luck in the world. I appreciate your, um, the neighborhood meeting that you had held and informing all the residents out there.
Thank you.
With that, Mayor and Council, I would move, uh, to follow planning commission's and staff's recommendations for approval of a Gen. Item 113.
Thank you. Please vote.
Mayor, before you vote, I think staff had to.
Let me on 114.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's on the next one.
Post, please.
I apologize.
Oh, this again, this.
We'll need to re.
Motion carries.
We'll need to retrain you, Mr. Fiorentino. It's been a long time. No, I'm just kidding.
Last time I was here, I didn't have gray hair either, so I wasn't going to say.
I'm glad to see you both back. That's a promising sign, too.
I bring these old warriors out of retirement.
Yeah. Um, and as Gen. Item 114, we've got just a couple of comments, uh, for the record director.
Please, um, Mayor and Council, uh, number two will be changed, will change the time limitation from two years to five years. And then we're going to add a condition, sir, that the property shall be posted with signage at the east, west, and south property lines with information regarding the approved zone change, ZON 39455. Signs should be submitted to the P and D Department for approval as to size, material content, and location. Building permits shall be required to ensure proper construction, and signs shall be continuously maintained until construction commences on the development of this site.
And you agree to those?
Yes.
And I'll explain to the mayor and council, uh, because we have extended the, uh, entitlement period from two years to, to the five years at the request of the applicant, I found it important that we notify prospective residents who want to move out there that, uh, that property has the signs on it indicating what's it, what it's going to be one day when it grows up. Uh, that way, there's no one uninformed in regards to making a decision if they want to move into those neighborhoods out in the northwest. So I thank you, uh, very much for that added condition because I think it makes a lot of sense. We often find residents looking around the city to move or to do business in, and they see a vacant parcel not knowing what it's zoned for. Uh, this is a step in the right direction in regards to keeping people informed as to what those parcels are going to be. So I appreciate your, uh, your willingness to participate in that. With that, Your Honor and Council, I would move to follow planning commission's staff's recommendation for approval of Gen. Item 114, subject to those conditions.
All right. Let's vote, please.
And as amended.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
If I could, please, I'd like to hold, uh, item 115 and 116 in abeyance until our, uh, December the first meeting, please.
All right. That's the motion on 115 and 116. Please vote. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. 119. 119 is VAR 39468, public hearing. The applicant is Richmond American Homes. The owner is Providence 207 LLC. Request for variance to allow the garage setback to be seven feet or less, where five feet or less is required, a front yard second story setback of three feet where eight feet is required, and rear and side yard setbacks of seven feet where 10 feet is required on lots 21 and 103 on 20.9 acres adjacent to the southwest corner of Farm Road and Wallaby Way. This is in Ward Six. The staff recommends denial. Planning commission recommends approval. This is a public, public hearing, which is now declared open.
Your Honor, members of the council, good afternoon. I'm Bob Grownhour, 8345 West Sunset Road. Um, in this matter, I'm representing Richmond American Homes. And to my right is Brian Walsh with, uh, Richmond American Homes. Um, this is, you've heard these stories, uh, in the past, and you'll probably hear some more in the future. Um, this is a subdivision that was purchased and approved for another developer to come in to develop the property. Um, the property unfortunately was developed by another developer with only about 12 homes that were built. Uh, Richmond American now is the new owner of this property and is coming in to, uh, finish off the lots that are located here, which is the good news. And, uh, with the approval of this application, we're looking to commence construction in, uh, January of 2011, which is a couple months from now. And, uh, so we're excited with the development of this project within Providence. With that being said, I know there is a clarification of a condition with Ms. Wheeler that we got to make with the, with the, uh, application itself, but I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Very good. Are there any questions? Folks, a public hearing?
Well, this one, this big job, it sound like y'all going to get it all straightened out, son. You look like you moving forward. That's good. Any, anything to make something happen. Wonderful.
Anybody else like to be heard? All right. We'll close the public hearing then. Uh, this is, uh, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, thank you, Mr. Grownhour, for both you being here today. As I indicated in the last, the last item, the home builders are back, and that's a significant sign. There are a lot of, a great deal of properties out there that I want to say you can get at a fire sale, if you will, but it's also a sign of progress. Your indication of homes being built in January, I've seen comments in the press and just people on the streets, you know, how can builders be building new homes when we have so many foreclosures on the market? Um, but it's interesting to know that a lot of people still want to buy a new home and not on, on one of those, on, on an existing home. Um, so I appreciate you guys working with me. And Director, did you need to add anything to 119?
Yes, Mayor and Councilman. All we need to do is amend condition number one, that instead of reading no more than 28 lots, shall be allowed the first story setback. This shall read no more than 73 lots shall be allowed the first story setback. And then that allows for the two different setbacks that they requested. Because the notice allows, is open to the number of lots, this is allowable under the current notice and doesn't require any change other than, as I read into, the number of lots from 28 to 73 in condition number one.
Okay. And you're okay with that, then? I was assuming the applicant agrees to that.
Yeah.
And with that, uh, Mayor and Council, I would move, uh, to follow planning commission's recommendation for approval of a Gen. Item 119, uh, and as amended.
All right. Let's vote, please. Post.
Thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And number 117 and 118 is a request for variance to allow, wait, that's, yeah. 121 is, uh, review of condition 36960, uh, review of condition, to delete conditions number three and five of a previously approved rezoning, 3, 3474, which is required a comprehensive site development plan to illustrate the location, uh, joint driveway, joint parking and access agreements, a consistent landscaping plan, and a traffic impact analysis. Uh, no, and 122 is a site development review, 36959, request for a site development plan review for proposed conversion of a single-family residence to a 1770 square foot office medical with waivers of the perimeter landscape buffer requirements to allow a zero-foot buffer along the west perimeter where 15 feet is required and zero-foot buffers along the north and south perimeters where five feet is required. This is in a 708 North Jones Boulevard. This is in, uh, the applicant owner is Sharon Roth. The project is located on 0.15 acres at 708 South Jones Boulevard. The planning commission and staff recommend approval of both items. These items are in Ward One, Council, Councilor Arcanian's Ward, and are public hearings, which I now declare open. Glad to hear from you.
Thank you very much, Your Honor and, uh, members of the council. Um, oh, yeah. My name is Sharon Roth. Uh, my address is 101 South Rainbow Boulevard. Um, and I purchased this, uh, property in order to make it into an acupuncture office. It was already zoned professional use, and, um, I'm hoping that it can move forward. Uh, staff and the, um, planning commission, uh, approved it already. So I'm hoping you may, too. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Larry Moncarsh, LM Construction, 2123 Paradise Road. Uh, we were retained by Mrs. Roth to redesign this property, to bring it in compliance with some of the parking issues, and to limit the amount of, um, requirements that the city council imposed on us. In addition, the Jones corridor, um, has had a mandate that all of these properties be zoned commercial, and they, uh, get into shared access agreements and shared driveways. And since the economy's taking a downturn, that changed. So we've gone back, we've redesigned it for its own driveway to access the site by itself. We've met the parking requirements, and we've mitigated the parking, the landscape issues. Um, so we're here, um, uh, asking for approval. Staff has recommended approval as well as planning commission.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant? This is a public hearing.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Councilman, I wish it could be better, but I saw the, the, the landscaping scheme at the planning commission, and I really believe that I concur with a lot of people that said that this is the best that can be done. And we really need to get this something in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, I want to thank the applicant for really going out on this and, and helping and doing whatever she could. Thank you.
Planning and, uh, staff agree, and, uh, I'm most sure that y'all going to agree. This is something moving forward. Anything's good moving forward. Thank you.
We'll close the public hearing. Uh, any other comments, questions of the council members? I make a motion to approve, uh, item number 121 with all conditions. You've heard the motion. Cast your vote. Please post.
I'll be down to just show up.
Please post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 122.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Item 122, I make a motion to follow planning commission staff's recommendation for approval of this item with all conditions, please. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries. Item 123 is a special use permit, 39367, applicant, uh, Money Tree Inc., owner, uh, Cat Sham LLC, request for special use permit for an auto li, auto title loan used within an existing 2291 square foot non-conforming financial institution specified with waivers to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a residential use where 200 feet is required, a 970-foot distance separation from a financial institution specified for 1,000 feet is required, and 24-hour operation where 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM is allowed at 7291 West Lake Mead Boulevard. This is in Suite 120. Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon. Jennifer Roberts of Lionel Sawyer &amp; Collins, appearing on behalf of Money Tree, the applicant. And, uh, we understand that staff recommended denial because of the number of waivers. However, given the magnitude, uh, the very minor magnitude of the waivers, uh, that are requested, um, uh, planning commission has, you know, did unanimously recommend approval. We have, uh, waivers to another financial institution specified. The actual distance is more than 1,000 feet. Same with the waiver for the residential. The actual distance door to, you know, property line of the residential is more than 200 feet. It's just given the part, the large commercial parcel, uh, the distances, uh, require a waiver. It is an existing Money Tree location right now. They're just looking to add the option of adding, uh, auto title loans.
Is it this 24 hours a day right now?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Applicants represented, represented. This is a public hearing.
Well, when it's split like that, but, uh, I know you, uh, uh, staff is the one that's against it, right? Staff?
Staff recommended, you know.
Denial?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, whatever. But I'm, I'm, whatever it is, I'm sure he'll work it out.
It, it is an existing building. It is, it is in use right now, though.
Okay. No problem.
Anyone else wish to speak? Senator, we'll close the public hearing. On behalf of Councilor Arcanian, uh, just for edification, it is 24 hours a day right now, and it doesn't, uh, it behooves us all to have somebody come in there at, uh, 11 o'clock and have them come back at 8:00 next morning. So, uh, I, I would make a motion to allow the 24-hour, uh, you know, with the, the addition of the, uh, I lost it here.
Mayor Portem, the, the, um, application as it is will approve the use and the 24-hour operation.
Yes, yes. Okay. Uh, that read my motion, with all conditions. Cast your vote. Please post.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, item one-twenty-four, I'd like to instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeal us from the city planning commission meetings and dangerous buildings, uh, nuisance, litter abatements. At this time, I would ask for a five-minute recess. I need a motion, yes.
Motion for a five-minute, no.
We'll be in a five, ten-minute recess at this time. The mayor will be here shortly after he makes his bets.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay.
Are you optimistic?
Yes. Okay, uh, do you want me to do some of this part as a... You want to do that now? Okay. All right, we'll call, uh, items fifty-eight and fifty-nine. Fifty-eight is discussion and possible action regarding a first amendment to exclusive negotiating agreement between City of Las Vegas and the Cordish Companies for development on approximately twenty acres at Las Vegas Boulevard and Stewart Avenue. And fifty-nine is discussion and possible action regarding the exclusive negotiating agreement by and between the City Parkway Five, Inc., Office District Parking One, Inc., the City of Las Vegas, Nevada, and LV Entertainment Development, LLC, for the exclusive rights to develop parcels located northeast of the intersection of Bonneville Avenue and Grand Central Parkway. Mr. Arndt, these items are in Ward five.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, Bill Arndt, Director, Office of Business Development. Uh, we do have a very brief PowerPoint presentation, and hopefully can get queued up. Thank you. Uh, the, these items before you, um, we're, uh, hearing both items, uh, really are two things. One is to amend our existing relationship with the Cordish Companies, and then also to consider a new agreement, uh, with LV Entertainment Development, LLC, which is an affiliate of the Cordish Companies. Uh, could I just briefly go over what we're, we're doing with these two proposed items? The current site for the planned project with Cordish, uh, is shown on the overhead. The site in light blue, uh, is where we're sitting today. It's the City Hall site, and that was proposed potentially for a hotel casino. The property which is outlined in red, uh, we've named in our agreement with Cordish Arena and an entertainment district, and, uh, because it was proposed for both of those projects. Those sites are currently under agreement with Cordish, uh, an agreement that dates back to November of last year, and was for a two-year term with one, one-year extension. Uh, we've been presented with a new market opportunity, uh, and in this economy, you always want to take advantage of new opportunities as they come your way. We received an unsolicited offer from a representative of a private user interested in the properties aforementioned on the last slide. And, uh, Cordish is a good partner, uh, has worked with the city and given us the right to have some good-faith discussions with that private user and its representative. And, uh, based on these discussions, we would like to consummate these discussions. And in working with Cordish, uh, both the city and Cordish are willing to move the arena project and the entertainment district project from its current planned location to Symphony Park. Uh, there's one part of the project I did not mention. The hotel casino is not moving over, and I'll explain why. The new site for the proposed Cordish project is outlined in yellow on the slide. Uh, you see, uh, familiar plans here at Symphony Park, the, uh, master plan, and the parcels outlined in yellow are parcels D, F...
Bill, if I could, please.
Yes.
If I could, I'd like to ask permission to leave at this time, and I would like, uh, for the record, my vote, yes, on both these items. I do support it. I have been briefed three or four times on this item, and I do support it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. Uh, so, these five parcels, D, F, O-one, O-two, and E, are the new site proposed for the Cordish project. Uh, I need to mention that, uh, some of these parcels are already under contract with third parties, and we've identified in the agreements for the proposed project that we need to work with the existing third parties in order to, uh, perfect the right of an exclusivity right for Cordish in Symphony Park on these five parcels. So the proposed amendment, uh, the new deal terms, uh, as I mentioned, we're giving an exclusivity right, or an ENA right, to Cordish in Symphony Park for the arena project and the entertainment district project. The term of the agreement, uh, is up to a maximum of, of a thirty-month term. That term only starts after we perfect those rights. And, uh, those, those rights that I mentioned, uh, are rights that we have to perfect on parcels D, F, F, O-one, as well as parcel E. Uh, we also have to obtain a waiver from Forest City to an exclusivity right for parcels in Symphony Park, on the northern part of Symphony Park, and, uh, that will be, uh, the third item that's a contingency to perfecting that exclusivity right. If this happens, then what the city will be doing is accelerating its commitment for the arena project and the entertainment district project. We'd be releasing up to two-point-four million dollars in a planning fund for the project, payable monthly draws. Uh, we would also have the right to receive back the planning fund if for some reason, uh, Cordish needed to proceed with the entertainment district project at another location. We're also releasing the already committed and funds which you've already approved in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars towards third-party expenses. In the, uh, item fifty-nine, the exclusivity agreement for Symphony Park, Cordish is committing to a deliverable schedule, giving us plans, uh, financing plans uh, over the next twelve to eighteen months, once they're in the term of that agreement. Uh, we're also, uh, looking to give Cordish a reinstatement right, which is a fancy way of saying, if for some reason we cannot consummate the deal with the private user, or that, uh, deal, uh, is defaulted and doesn't close, uh, such as Close of escrow, then Cordish would have a reinstatement right to both the City Hall site and the Live District site, which was the slide which I started with. They would have the right, at their discretion, to either stay at Symphony Park if that right were perfected, or go back to the City Hall site and the Live District site. Uh, some benefits to the city, uh, we're amending our relationship uh, to try to secure a private user for this site and the Live District site. Uh, it's stated in the Cordish agreements that the private user is looking to bring a minimum of seven-hundred-and-fifty jobs to downtown, and in this economy, that's incredibly important. Also equally important is we're retaining our relationship with the Cordish Companies in pursuing the arena project and the entertainment district project, and we're also accelerating our commitment for pre-development expenses for the project, thereby improving the chances for success. So the actions today, item fifty-nine approves a first amendment to the existing agreement, the exclusive negotiating agreement, and item fifty-nine approves a new, uh, ENA, which is really contingent on those things happening, as I mentioned, with Cordish for Symphony Park. And also, item fifty-nine approves the appropriation of funds for that planning fund for the entertainment district project in Symphony Park. As a separate action, we're intending to bring a development agreement with a private user at a future council meeting, and, uh, that's the new opportunity that we're pursuing and will continue to pursue. Uh, that summarizes the actions today, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
All right, um, are there any questions of Mr. Arndt at this time? Councilwoman Wilson?
Bill, um, if you could go back to that last slide, please. The funds for the planning fund, I believe you said it was about, did you say two-point-four million dollars?
That's correct.
Where do those funds come from?
Uh, the funds are not general funds. Uh, our office, as you know, has, uh, some different funding sources for economic development and redevelopment. It's a combination of funds, as stated in the agenda. One is an industrial development revenue fund, which is the funds from what I would call a wind-down account, an account that we've accumulated over time. It's not recurring revenue, but revenue that we had from our business park development as the city. And the other source of funds is Office District Parking, which is one of the entities uh, that is the holding companies of the city for development in downtown, and those were, uh, cash funds on hand, so, uh, none of those funds, none of the two-point-four million dollars is coming from the general fund, and therefore, there won't be any operating impact to the city.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, any other questions at this time? Um, I see Mr. Tellis is here. Would you like to be heard today? Well, it's, it's up to you, Mr. Tellis. Uh, we're happy that you're here, uh, representing the Cordish Company, and would be delighted if you'd like to, uh, add to what we're doing. Or, um, we, we can proceed, uh, as we had planned without you.
Sure.
It's good having you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is, uh, Port Tellis, I'm with the Cordish Company. Uh, you know, it's, uh, it's a pleasure to be here again, and, uh, we're happy to accommodate the city uh, and their efforts, uh, both here on this site and on the new site. Uh, we think Symphony Park is, has good infrastructure. It's got good bones, and it's going to, um, be a wonderful site for an arena and a live district.
All right, thank you very much for being here. If you'd be kind enough to see me afterwards, I'd sure appreciate it.
Absolutely, Mayor.
All right, thanks a million. I'd like the record to reflect that, um, I've had discussions with Robert Zarnigan, who, uh, is the CEO of Probody International, uh, the developer of the proposed World Jewelry Center project. And, um, uh, we, we agreed that, uh, World Jewelry Center is a wonderful project, important to our city and to future economic development in our downtown, and, uh, we, we want, um, him, uh, to take us at our word that, uh, the Cordish agreement in no way diminishes the City of Las Vegas' interest in his project, and, uh, we are grateful to him as far as his commitment to the City of Las Vegas, and, uh, we thank him for being accommodating in order for us to proceed with, uh, this particular, uh, agenda items, and we're going to be working with him to see whether or not we're able to negotiate another site at Symphony Park where the Jewelry Center, uh, could, uh, be, uh, located. Uh, but I thought it was important to show that he has been, uh, very cooperative uh, in his dealings with the city, and, uh, hopefully will continue those. All right, uh, Councilor Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, you and I had a conversation this afternoon in regards to this item, and you mentioned in life, there's no guarantees, and I want to just disagree with you slightly. If we do nothing, that is a guarantee that nothing will happen.
That's true.
So, being, um, an optimist, being someone that understands, um, the movement of government, and the things that we can do that certain elements of the private sector can't, I believe that we're in the right position to, um, set the pace specifically with Nevada being, uh, having the highest rate of unemployment. So many families are displaced, so many people are hurting right now, specifically as we talk about economic development, redevelopment. There is no guarantee that these items will come together, but we have to do all that we can as a council, all that we can as individuals to, uh, try to revitalize and bring about a change to our economy, to help those families that will be in need. With the private user, uh, that we've been in discussions with, I believe that if in fact this does, uh, come forward and happen, that we are in a very good position to really change the landscape of downtown. Um, and that's not to say that it's only here at Stewart and Las Vegas Boulevard. What we have going with the Cordish Group out at Symphony Park, Port stated it very plain and, and, and factual that Symphony Park has the right bones and the appropriate infrastructure for an arena site as well as the Live District coming forward, and so, if all those pieces of the puzzle come together, we have an opportunity to really, uh, reduce the unemployment in Las Vegas and Nevada as a whole, but also bring about a change that will be able to help us sustain the downtown and really make it the vibrant, the vibrant community that I look forward to having. And so with that, uh, I am in agreement with, uh, all the, all of the discussions. I've been briefed, uh, I don't know, countless times, and, uh, hearing Mr. Arndt say the same thing day in and day out, meeting after meeting, briefing after briefing, uh, it's almost... I'm tired of hearing it. But thank you, uh, Bill, for your due diligence, and, uh, you and your entire staff, and of course, uh, the city manager's office for working on this, um, this project that we believe will most definitely be, um, a true benchmark for the entire ballot to enjoy. So with that, Mayor, I would like to move to, uh, move for approval of this item subject to all conditions.
Okay, that's on fifty-eight. Let's go to fifty-eight first. Post, please. Motion... Motion carries, and fifty-nine, please.
And as far as fifty-nine, I do want to thank the Cordish Group and, of course, staff once again for all of the hard work. And of course, we would be remiss if I didn't mention the city attorney's office, who have been working their tails off to make sure that everything was in compliance. So my hat is off to the, all of the attorneys on both sides of the aisle for working with us to accomplish what we're setting forth to do. So with that, I would like to move for approval of this item subject to all conditions.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Aron. Thank you to our wonderful legal team that worked very, very hard. And thank you to Betsy and the manager's office for really going beyond the call of duty on this one. One twenty-five? Good. One twenty-five is citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. Those subjects may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda. So if you want to be heard, come up, give us your name, we'll put a three-minute timer on, please.
Good afternoon. Dorothy Barnes, Las Vegas resident. I would like to congratulate you on this stand-down for the homeless on November 10. I think it was another successful year. I benefited from it, and I hope a lot of other people that are homeless and in trouble benefited. I benefited from the court section and had my ticket squashed. I was glad. So I'm here today. I'm still offering people to give me a signature on a promissory note. A lot of people are still in trouble because of these special interest programs, programs that are a threat to national security. I've asked them to discontinue my name on any and all such programs. I haven't been able to be allowed on Ellis Airport space, but I wanted this situation cleared, so if I get to go home this holiday, I'll be able to enjoy with my family and hope everybody else will have a happy, safe, and blessed holiday season with theirs, and hoping and praying for the military people to be able to come home and enjoy with theirs, and hoping they'll resolve the conflict in Iran. Being a veteran, my heart goes out to all military people and veterans alike and their families. So I'm hoping they'll cancel my name off the program, maybe the world, and I don't know. There's some benefit to them getting my name off the program if I can get on Ellis. Thank you all, and hope somebody can hear me that know what to do with this situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yes. My name is Hector Camacho, fifteen oh-one Northeastern. I come here because I may have a little bit of problem with the city, as you know. I hope you feel optimistic today, Mr. Goodman. I sent you a certified letter with return. I sent it to Mr. Gerro Ruiz and to the, uh... Yes. And I have no response. I've been sending this for the Freedom of Information Act for the last couple of years. I never have a response. And I believe one of the reasons is because you need to be served direct to the person, and it costs $500 to hire a company. And that's why I decided to come here, to serve you one direct to this one, I hope, before you leave, you leave office, you're destroying my problem. And I send you hands, and it's a five minutes. Okay? I hope, because today, court enforcement, I went back to my property, they continue her rights maintained, it's just, it's not against me, now they're against people, working people, Mexican people, okay? And I, and I hope Councilman Wilson and Councilman Ross listen to what I say, because I'm going to leave a note, because I read in the papers, probably you're going to be one of the two the next mayor. But I hope Mr. Goodman can fix this one before he leave office. Please.
All right. You want to leave that with me again?
Yeah. I want to leave, I want to leave a copy with you.
Okay.
I want to leave a copy for, you know, with the, with the clerk for Mr. Ruiz.
All right.
One for the city, city manager.
Fine.
Okay?
Good.
And one for public record, that's four.
Okay. Thank you.
And I want to leave two, one for Councilman Wilson and one to Councilman Ross. And I would like, because I see you're going to go for, probably going to try, one of the two are going to be the mayor, I would like to have a meeting. Maybe you think I'm crazy, just meet with me, okay? I try not to sue City of Las Vegas, because it costs money, and I promised Mr. Goodman I'm going to try to solve the problem. And I, but I, they, they put me, I lose one, I lose one the property because what City of Las Vegas doing to me, I have to fight, it cost me $10,000, just, just to try to help, to go to the economy like you're saying, you help, you want the economy to restart it, you congratulate the people, spend millions of dollars, but do a little research. City of Las Vegas is the one that less, got less vacancy in the park where the Latino peoples are. The Latino people want to work, don't just give a hard time like you're doing today. They call, they scare. A lot of people don't speak English, okay? They thinking you're going to destroy it. Please, I would like to see if you can, if you can give me five or 10 minutes, even with, maybe with the mayor and with the Councilman Ruiz. The only person he catch the last time, they violated all my, all my rights when they can, when they pushed me out. I know it was no, Mr. Goodman, he followed order from the attorney.
All right. Let's do this.
The only person he, just, I finish with this one. The only person he catch exactly what he going on, it was Mr. Kenyon. And they, and they, they push him a little bit, and they started, somebody else started to talk that way.
Camacho, why don't you hand those up to the clerk? She'll get me a copy and the others a copy, and make sure they're in the right spot, and I'm sure you're going to hear back from us.
Please, I would like, Mr. Goodman, if you can get back to me on Monday, or maybe, please.
I don't want to make any promises when, but we will get back to you, that I promise.
Because we've been sending letters, my attorney, nobody answers like it.
Okay.
We are, we're the power for people, and I know it's not you, it's only a couple of people I think would hate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. Make sure I get a copy of that, please. All right. Next, please.
Hello. My name is the Lord Jesus Christ, also known as R. Joshua Collins. As many of you know, the name Jesus comes from Joshua Yeshua. I'd like people to go to the website, JesusHasReturn.TK, if they're interested. That'll show you that Revelation eighteen eleven says the merchants will weep because no one buys their cargo anymore when the Messiah comes back. It also talks about in Revelation twenty-two-two, that they'll be healing of the nations, that's why we have the healthcare reform. So this is the time of the return of the Lord, and I've been arrested 31 times now for preaching and fighting for the homeless here in this city. And just today, Mayor Goodman tried to stop me from speaking.
No, I, I...
Can I finish, please?
No.
Again, I can't finish?
You're gonna, I'm gonna let you finish. I'm gonna tell you this, though: you were speaking off the agenda and in violation of the open meeting law. That's the reason I stopped you. I am not stopping you now. You can say whatever you want to say, and you can use up your three minutes, and we stopped the timer, so my comments aren't going to interrupt your three minutes.
Okay.
So you can say whatever you want to say.
Okay. I disagree, Mayor Goodman, and you didn't even let me finish what I was going to say, so, you didn't even know what I was going to say, so to judge what I'm going to say before I say it doesn't make any sense. But this city is cursed because of sin. Sin brings a curse. That's why there's number one in unemployment, foreclosures, bankruptcies. And don't be optimistic if you're living in sin and promoting sin. And those of you that say that you're Christian, that don't believe in me, I want you to understand: Revelation chapter 11 shows you that the two witnesses are the ones that are caught up to heaven in the rapture. In John seventeen eighteen, in the first coming, Christ says, "I'm a witness of myself, my Father is the other witness." And you see those two witnesses go through persecution. At the end of that persecution, they're raptured, right? I was in that rapture last year, and obviously no one else was. But that's how the rapture scenario goes. So those of you waiting for rapture, be waiting a long time, it's already over. Again, go to JesusHasReturn.TK for more information. And I just hope Mayor Goodman won't discriminate against me again when I try to speak. Again, under NRS chapter 201, the city of Las Vegas is supposed to uphold good morals and public decency, and they don't, and that's treason under NRS 196. All these laws can be found on the internet. Messing with me is just like messing with the Ark of the Covenant. You don't go up to the Ark of the Covenant and shake it or try to put it in jail, because what that does, it brings a curse on you, okay? So I encourage you to respect the Lord, who I am, despite what you think or believe, that's never going to change. That's really who I am. And I encourage people to be a non-consumer, you know, and just live simple, and boycott this sin in this city, you know? The gambling and everything, remember sexual sin? And greed leads to hell, be sober, don't curse, smoke, gamble, or lie, and, you know, work on your spiritual life and get out of all the addictions, you know, and, you know, don't, don't be a part of the sin. And look out for the children, that's what I encourage city council to do, but I don't see them doing that, and they just keep promoting this wickedness. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. In regards to Mark Benson's presentation this morning, I hope that his projections are right. I really do hope that. But I think some of that data was on some shaky ground. I told you several, a couple months ago, I think, that I was going to write you a letter stating some opinions. The problem I'm having now is when I call these magazines for reprints of their articles, or permission to reprint their articles, or, or, or some, I don't know, they're not, they're not used to dealing with under 100 copies, I guess. So I have a problem there. But in this week's issue of Nation Magazine, the November 22nd issue, there's an article by William, I guess it's Greider, Grei, Greider, G-R-E-I-D-E-R. And the data that, that Mr. Benson used is only valid if certain things happen in the national economy, and that may not be so. I mean, the workers have been picking up the tab for the entire world since the end of World War II. We don't have any more money. President Obama went over to try to reason on the, on this trade imbalance, and he's got sent back with his tail between his legs. They're not going to deal with us. The American person, the worker, has just gotten screwed. So we're going to have to have a restart, and that goes deeper into the presentation of the abandoned houses. There's a lot of people out there that really want to work. There are no jobs, not even for engineers, folks. I have five engineer friends, and they're good, top of their line. There are no jobs. They've all gone. So, in a lighter method, Mayor, you have unfinished business to do. Now, I remember when you came on board, a long time ago, you were going to change that seal up there. And I don't, and I'm wondering if you will give us an update on how you're coming on that.
Okay. I'd be happy to, Mr. Farlow. I, I'm in the toilet. I struck out 1,000 percent. I wanted to change it in the worst way. I think it's a worse seal than any city in the history of the world has ever had, but they told me it would cost several million dollars to change all of our stationery and where the seal is situated throughout the city, and I just didn't feel in good conscience that because I don't like our seal that I could spend taxpayer money like that. So that's where we are. The next mayor we want to change, and particularly the planes going through the World Trade Center. Okay. Anybody else want to be heard? All right. Thank you very much, everybody. The meeting's adjourned. No? What happened?
Counselor.
Oh, okay. Oh, my goodness, I wasn't going to hear from my counsel.
That's the most important.
You're right. I'm sorry. Item 126 is council member recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Would any member of the council...
All of us.
Want to be heard? Thank you, Mayor. I never thought that you would ask.
I, I, I apologize. I really do. It's been a long couple of days here. Okay. Let's, we'll, we'll start, we'll go from left to right this time, okay? How's that sound? Councilman Barlow?
No, I'll defer.
Okay. Councilman Wilson?
I'm going to defer.
All right. Councilman Ross?
Well, I'll get this started then, Mayor. I happen to like the city seal, actually.
Oh.
You're right. Been quite fond of that, even as a small boy, I was fond of that city seal. I could talk.
The only problem is, Councilman Ross, there's nothing in the city of Las Vegas that's on the seal. Nothing, not a thing on that, on that is, in the city of Las Vegas.
Okay. I'll get sidetracked.
The sun shines here, that's true.
Mayor, apparently this Friday, November 19th, you and I will be at Centennial Hills Starbucks, located at 6381 Centennial Center Boulevard. Folks, I'd encourage you to come out there and get your pictures taken with the mayor, and perhaps an autograph, because he spends a lot of time doing that, these copies with the mayor. So I encourage everybody to come out. That's 8:30, November 19th, this Friday, at the Starbucks at 6381 Centennial Center Boulevard. I will also be with the mayor in attendance there, and of course, the holidays are upon us. We have our fourth annual Cowboy Christmas, and coming up here December 4th, out at Floyd Lamb Tulley Springs Park. And that is going to be from 11 to 2. We are having a classic car show, and of course, we'll have jump houses, and the farmer's market, and crafts, and vendors, and Santa Claus. And I understand, Mayor, you have a family commitment, you will not be riding in with Santa Claus.
I probably won't be riding with Santa Claus, but I can assure you, I will be there during that, during that wonderful occasion.
I will do my best then to, to represent you with Santa, one of my, my great goals in life. The car show, if you're interested in entering your car, it's a classic car show, the cost is $25. You will get a T-shirt, a dash plaque, and of course, a goodie bag, and be entered into the raffles. If you want further information, contact my office at 229-6154. I can't wait to see everyone out there. It is a good showing every year. So no horses this year, Mayor, it'll be classic cars.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's all I have. So that's, that's my report.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of events I want to inform the public on. The first one is a shredding party that I'm sponsoring in Ward Four that's open to anyone, and anyone who wants to show up. And as many of you know, my last assignment as a captain with the Las Vegas Police Department was the commander of the Financial Crimes Bureau, and it was amazing how many people's identity was stolen because of documents that were just sitting around and became victims of crimes, and it's, it's a terrible thing. So this is an opportunity for folks to come up, it's free of charge, you can bring all your personal documents that have your social security number on it, bank accounts, things that people can steal to steal your identity, and we'll shred it right there, right in front of you. You don't, you don't have to worry about it. The, the event is being held Saturday, November 20th, from 10:00 AM to noon at the Durango Hills Community Center, located at 3521 North Durango, which is at, right around Durango and Gowin. Again, it's free of charge. Opportunity Village will be out there to shred your documents, and all the paper that they collect from the shredding, they resell as recycled paper, and they generate revenue to service the, the clients that they need to help. In addition to that, if you'd like to, we'd like to have you bring an unwrapped toy that you can donate to us, that we can give to Toys for Tots to help with kids during Christmas.
No, a wrapped toy.
I'm sorry, a wrapped toy. It says in the press release, unwrapped toy. Thank you very much.
No, I got a couple of unwrapped toys in my house.
It's a brand-new toy.
Right.
It's never been used. And if you can't do that, if you could bring some canned food, we'd like to help folks in need during Thanksgiving. So again, it's Saturday, November 20th, from 10:00 to noon. Please come out, bring your documents, it's free, like to meet with you and chat with you. Also, I want to remind you that we are in the middle of a pretty important program right now. It's called the Save a Life Program. It's sponsored by the city of Las Vegas, the University Medical Center, and the YMCA of Southern Nevada. And if you come out for 15 minutes, it's all you need, you're going to get hands-on continuous chest compression, CPR awareness, you're going to be able to win some raffles and giveaways, you'll be able to receive awareness in CPR, you're going to increase the awareness of automated external defibrillators, and you're going to raise the rate of survival for individuals experiencing cardiac arrest in our community. So 15 minutes of your time can actually help save a life. And we do have some events that are coming up tonight at the Durango Hills Community Center, tonight, Wednesday, November 17th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. On Thursday, November 18th, at the Durango Hills Community Center, from 10:00 AM to noon. Also, on Thursday, from 6:00 to 8:00, this is for Sun City residents only, the Desert Vista Community Center. Also, Friday morning, November 19th, from 8:30 to 10:30, the Desert Vista Community Center for Sun City residents only. And then in Councilman Ross's ward, on Saturday, November 20th, the Centennial Hills Community Center, from 10:00 AM to noon, which is located at 6601 North Buffalo. I will be at all the events in my ward, and Councilman Ross will be at the event in his ward. So you can meet with us and talk to us about any issues that you're having in your particular ward. And thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. On, let me see here, tomorrow, the Urban Chamber of Commerce in the city of Las Vegas will be doing the ribbon cutting of the merger and the collaboration of the Office of Business Development Redevelopment Agency and the city of Las Vegas and the Urban League, Urban League, the Urban Chamber, I apologize. Tomorrow at 10:00 AM, it will be taking place at the new facility right at Lake Mead and Stella Lake. So please come out at 10:00 AM tomorrow, November 18th. And on December 2nd, coffee with the councilmen, Rancho and Bonanza. So please come out. I will be there from 9:00 AM until 10:00 AM. December 4th, December to Remember, in the Cultural Corridor with Ms. Gillespie, who is the executive director at the Natural History Museum, is hosting the December to Remember. So please come out on December 4th, and that will be taking place in the afternoon, I'm sorry, in the evening. December, Friday, December 7th will be the, December 17th, I apologize, Friday, December 17th will be the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, the Ward 5 Christmas tree lighting ceremony, which is going to be a fabulous event for the entire family. We will be lighting a 20-foot-tall Christmas tree inside of Lorenzi Park, and we invite all community members to come out. And we have a number of elementary school students who will be making decorations and bulbs for the tree. And the reason I'm doing this is because so many children for the holidays, Mayor and Council, go without a Christmas tree. And so I wanted to make sure that no kid in Ward 5 goes without a Christmas tree. So when they come to the park, they have their own Christmas tree to enjoy for the holiday. So please, family, come out, and we will be having hot dogs, cotton candy, popcorn, a lot of goodies for the kids, and we will be showing a movie, starting at 6:00 PM, Christmas with the, I can't pronounce it, Crunk, Cranks, or something of that nature, but it's a pretty funny movie. I can't pronounce the name, but please come out, December 17th, 5:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. And you can do me a favor, Councilman, at the Urban Chamber ribbon cutting?
Yes.
I won't be able to be there. I have the mayor's prayer breakfast tomorrow.
That is correct.
And my wife is the guest speaker, so I can't leave that one.
Well, I most definitely stand in your stead.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. Every council meeting, I talk about another missing child, and since our last meeting, another child shown during our council meetings over the last few months has been found. That brings our total up to six of the 11 children that we have highlighted during a council meeting have been located. The information about these missing kids is provided to me prior to each meeting by Nevada Child Seekers, and is also available on their website at www.nevadachildseekers.org. Today's child is 16 years old and has been missing since October 6th of this year. You can see her picture on the screen right now. Her name is Brittany Bailey. She is 5 feet 7 inches tall, weighs 175 pounds, has brown eyes and dark brown hair. She also goes by the name Brianna Bailey. She is considered an endangered runaway and was last seen at the West Care on Duncan and Rancho. She has two vertical lines branded on her upper-left arm. She may need medical attention, so it's very important that she be found as soon as possible.